We are just about started on YouTube, so give me one moment to make sure that's run.
And Bill just showed up in the waiting room too. I'm switching him over.
Awesome.
I am here.
Hi, Commissioner Castanelli.
Good evening.
Hang on, but I'm gonna send you over to the panelists, so bear with me while we reconnect you.
Okay.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm having trouble with my earphones. I'm gonna have to do just sound off the computer.
Brian, you're live everywhere whenever you are ready.
All right, thanks, Chris. Bill, are you switched over?
I'm gonna, Ryan, I'm gonna bounce in and out on and off camera.
Perfect. Did you see Bill? Hi, Bill. So team, give me a thumbs up. Everybody good?
I'm good, but I can't give you a thumbs up.
That's right. Sorry, Lisa. Blink your screen or something. I'm joking. Chris, if we're good, we'll get this thing rolling. So at this time, I would like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning meeting for the date of May 21st, and let's start the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please, sorry, Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Seal. Commissioner Seal, you're muted.
Here. Sorry about that. My button was not working.
Commissioner McCarville.
Here.
Commissioner Pittsir.
Here.
Commissioner Grove.
Here.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Here.
Chairman Fitzgerald.
Here.
Thanks, ma'am. So moving on to the first item on our agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda, we do have one change for tonight's agenda. Public hearing for Modern Craftsman, file number H2020-0022, has requested a continuance. As we get into that, we'll talk about it, but we have a quorum challenge for the day of June, or July 2nd. And so as we're starting to roll through the agenda, I think the hope is that our commission members can discuss the opportunity to have a meeting on the 9th versus the 2nd to keep our backlog of significant amount of applications we've got in front of us. I think we're racking up four to five, and I have heard a sixth meeting coming in July that everybody needs to get a cop for to get us through it. But if it's okay, I think we have a quorum challenge on the 2nd, so we would, if it works for the commission, we'd like to move that meeting to the 9th. It would shift from a regular meeting to a special meeting, but we'd have two meetings in July. So just think about that as we're starting this process. But with that change, can I get a motion to adopt agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 So same. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the only item on there is the approval of minutes of the May 7th, 2020 planning and zoning commission meeting. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda presented as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, perfect. So as we move in, I think, welcome to all those that are joining us virtually. We appreciate during this COVID response, the city's done an exceptional job of providing us a platform that we can all continue to receive public comment and get the city involved in our development applications that we're bringing through planning and zoning commission. So on your screen, you'll see the commissioners who are present for this evening's meeting, which we're all here. Also on the call are our staff attorneys, the city clerk's office, and our planning and zoning, or our planning department staff. Everyone else that is online for the Zoom call attendees are able to observe the meeting, and we can see that you're there. However, your ability to talk and be seen will be muted until we're ready to call on you. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, you'll be unmuted and able to comment. If you have previously sent a presentation for the meeting, our clerk's office will run the presentation for you, or if you've already worked with them, they can hand over the capability to run the presentation yourself. The clerk will bring your slides up for your presentation and then kind of walk you through how to run that. If you simply want to watch the meeting, we encourage you to watch that through the streaming live YouTube channel that the city has set up. You can access that at meridiancity.org/live. When public testimony is open for each application, the clerk will call the names of those who have signed up to testify on our website. You will be unmuted and brought into the meeting so that we can see you. Hopefully, if you have a Zoom capability, we can turn your camera on if you'd like to do that, or you can just talk via the audio function. Please state your name and your address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony to the commission. After that time, we will, we may ask you questions for clarification, and then once done, you'll be muted and no longer have the ability to speak. Once all of those who are set up or in advance are called on, I will open it up to see if there's anybody else who wishes to testify on an application. If you wish to speak on the topic, you may press the raise the hand button in the Zoom app. Or if you've only been listening through a cellphone or a landline, you can press star nine and let Chris know that you'd like to speak. If you're listening on multiple devices, a computer and a phone, please be sure to mute one or the devices so you don't have an echo. And then we can make sure we can effectively hear you. Please note that we cannot take questions until the public testimony portion. In addition, if you have already been given your three minutes, unless we specific, have a specific need, that that will be your time to speak. So make sure you get your comments into that portion of the discussion. If you do have a process question during the meeting, you can email Chris or Adrian, our city clerks, at cityclerk@meridiancity.org, and they can hopefully help with your, making sure you're heard during the meeting, or if you can deal with any process questions. So hopefully that's clear, and we can move on with the next item on the agenda. So as I open up the public hearing for Modern Craftsman, in order to continue it, and that's H2020-0022. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to check your calendars to see if you would be able to be a part of a meeting on the 9th of July. If that's the case, then we have concerns with us shifting our July 2nd meeting and holding a July 9th meeting and then putting this application on that day.
Works for Commissioner Holland.
Same for Commissioner Seal.
Ditto for Commissioner Pittsir.
Yes, for Commissioner Carville.
Commissioner Castanelli has a conflict.
Okay.
Works for Commissioner Grove.
Commissioner Castanelli, are you okay with us moving forward with the 9th meeting, moving it there?
I am.
Okay. So with that being the case, can I get a motion to continue the public hearing for Modern Craftsman, H2020-0022, to a special planning and zoning meeting on July 9th?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing for Modern Craftsman, H2020-0022, the date of July 9th. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Perfect. Thank you all very much, and appreciate all the work we're doing. I know that we're busy, and we have some special meetings coming up and a lot of applications to get through, so I appreciate all your efforts. Moving on to the second item on our agenda is a public hearing for Compass Charter School East Expansion, H2020-0042. And before we get started, Commissioner Castanelli, I know you had a, you had a comment on this application before we turned to the staff report.
I did, thank you. I actually serve on the board at Compass Charter, so I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself on this. I think, I think I could be impartial, but I think just to, just for the optics, I'm gonna go ahead and recuse. So I'll mute myself and turn off my video, and then I'll, I'll be back for, for the following item.
We appreciate your letting us know, and I commend your actions. I think that's great, and we appreciate it. So I will move on.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Seal, go right ahead.
Just for full disclosure, I have a child that goes to Compass Charter, but I think I can be completely impartial about this.
Okay. Thank you for the disclosure. Any concerns or comments about Commissioner Seal's having a child at that school?
No concern from Commissioner Holland.
I have no concern either. I appreciate your disclosure, though. Thank you. Moving on to, from there, Joe, I'll turn over this to the staff report for the Compass Charter School, and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Commission. Appreciate you being here tonight. Always fun to present these new projects to you guys. So this is item number 5B, Compass Charter School East Expansion. The site consists of 5.15 acres of land, currently zoned RUT. It's located specifically at 4540 West Franklin Road, which is near the intersection of Black Cat and Franklin. The applicant is requesting annexation with the zoning designation of R15. The proposed use is an education institution because it will be an extension of the Compass Charter School directly to the west of the subject site. Next slide, Chris. An education institution is a principally permitted use in the R15 zoning district. A parking lot for additional parking and a sports field for the students are the only development proposed with this annexation. So there is no plat, just to be clear. The parking lot and additional 88 spaces is a requirement of the recently approved classroom expansion at the existing school site. A condition of approval in that approved CCC and design review hinges on this annexation and the future parking lot. I did specifically add some conditions in there in case this were not to pass as well. Currently, the existing development agreement shows additional parking and conceptual sports field on the parcel directly to the north of this site and across West Aviator. You can kind of see it on this image where that current temporary turnaround is, that's the southwest corner of the larger site that the original DA and concept plan shows the track and field and additional parking. Since the original annexation and development of the Compass Charter School, the applicant's desired location for this additional parking and sports field has changed. Citing potential safety issues for children and staff crossing West Aviator and the cost of installing a signal from that northern parcel to the main school site, the applicant has decided to move these development items to this subject site, which is directly adjacent to the existing buildings. Because this concept plan is not in line with the approved plan within the existing DA, a modification to the development agreement is required. Staff believes that this new concept plan will offer better integration of the sports field into the existing school site and help eliminate the need of children to cross the street from the parking area to get to school after parent pick up and drop off. The proposed use of education institution requires a 25-foot land use buffer adjacent to residential uses. The submitted landscape plan shows compliance with this requirement along its eastern boundary, except for the area directly abutting the proposed parking lot. Next slide, Chris. In order to fit the required number of spaces in this area, the dimensions of the parking area push into that 25-foot buffer. Because of this, the applicant is requesting a modification to the buffer by city council only for this area abutting the parking lot. The rest of the parcel will meet the required landscape buffer. Staff supports this request as the submitted landscape plan fills a landscape buffer of at least 15 feet with landscaping. And staff would also like to note that if this were to be labeled as only a parking lot instead of an education institution, UDC standards would only require a five-foot landscape buffer. The applicant's landscape plan shows extensive landscaping and a six-foot vinyl privacy fence along the entire eastern boundary, including that area along the parking lot. Staff finds the proposed landscaping to be greater than or equal to the required 25-foot buffer. The neighbors to the east have also shown support of the proposed landscape buffer along their shared property land. We did have that neighbor directly to the east did write in, as you probably saw, and her concerns were, well, first her name is Linda Bowery. Her concerns were regarding the concept plan, which is on the previous slide, showing the southern parcel and the potential cross-access. I have spoken with her, and to be clear with the commission, that this is merely a concept plan, and how that southern piece were to develop in the future is not up for debate tonight. It is just required to be part of the amendment to the DA to show some type of concept. I did speak with Mrs. Bowery and quelled some of her fears regarding the cross-access and things like that. One other point of note is the applicant did respond to my staff report, and they would like to change one of the conditions regarding the Franklin Road access and this concept plan, basically. They are gonna request or are requesting that I modify that condition, and it is up to commission and council whether they, whether you choose to make that change. Staff recommends approval of this applicant's request for annexation and zoning and a modification to their existing development agreement with the conditions of approval in the staff report. Thank you, and I will stand for questions.
Thanks, Joe. Are there questions for the staff?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Holland.
Commissioner Holland, go right ahead.
Um, one quick question. So I know the reason that they probably selected an R15 zoning is to be consistent with the future use map. But if this specific project doesn't go through, does that open us up that we can see an R15 development come in there at some point in the future? Or is there something in the DA that would prohibit that, that they'd have to come back before the commission and council?
Commissioner Holland, commission, if this, if this were annexed in and zoned R15, then that would stay, yes, the R15 zoning. What use is proposed on that would, or if any future subdivision were to occur, that would still have to come through and come back. And that includes for, if the applicant wants to break off that southern parcel, they will, that will also have to be done through a future land use application and would also require modification to the development agreement.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal, go right ahead, sir.
A question on the access to Franklin. Is that, the access to Franklin is only on the parcel that is being considered as, as part of this, correct? It's not their existing access to Franklin that's in debate?
Commissioner Seal, commission, the, yes and no, the, there are currently at least one access to Franklin on this parcel for the residents that is currently there, that a standard condition, because they have a lesser classified road for access, which would be West Aviator, is to close the access to Franklin Road, and that's in line with comprehensive plan policies and ACHD policy. So that's the condition in my staff report is to close that access. But if in the future they want to subdivide this parcel and sell off that bottom piece as shown on the concept plan, then that would have to go through a new modification of development agreement and probably some type of plat in order to do that. And then we would reevaluate that access at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for Joe? Okay. Thanks, Joe. We appreciate it. With the applicant, Chris, can we get the applicant into our platform?
I do have Mr. Birlane in. I'm not aware if anyone else is with him. Happy to bring anybody in.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Birlane, I think you're muted currently, but if you can unmute yourself, we would love to hear from you, sir.
Yes, can you?
I can hear you now, sir.
Well, thank you very much for hearing this tonight. Do you guys have any questions for me right now?
Nope. If you could state your name and your address for the record, and then we could, and whatever additional comments you've got, 15 minutes to give us your presentation, or 10 minutes, I'm sorry, 15, to submit your presentation. Or you can agree with the staff report, whatever you'd like to do. We're, the floor is yours. Oh, I think you're muted again, Mr. Birlane. Chris, can you unmute him?
It does not respond when I try to unmute him.
Oh, Mr. Birlane, I think you're back.
Yeah, how's that?
That's better.
All right, sorry about that. Paul Beerline, Pabba USA, from Grand Rapids, Michigan. I think Joe did a, Mr. Dawson did a very good job in relaying what we'd like to do with the site. Regarding item number four, I would like to talk about that a little bit. In reading the city agency comment number four, our team has concern that they may not have the opportunity to, or may not have the opportunity to potentially develop the south parcel in the future, and that's as shown on the concept plan on page eight of the staff report. As of now, the intent is for the school to split off that south one acre of that parcel and rezone it to commercial and sell it to a developer. And this sale will generate much-needed revenue to construct this parking lot expansion as budget constraints are a big concern. Reading the comment, it might be misunderstood that access to Franklin may never be allowed, thus prohibiting the potential sale of a one-acre commercial lot. We believe the intent of this comment is that the drive is to be closed so that the school does not use it to access the five acres. Since that is not the intent of the school, we have no problem closing the driveway. Again, the concern is the wording of the comment and the, and the potential misinterpretation that access to Franklin will never be allowed, thus rendering the south part of the parcel as undevelopable. We understand that if the one-acre lot sells and develops, it will be subject to its own development agreement, and that agreement may outline the access requirements for that particular development. Depending on timing, that development may need temporary access to Franklin if the alternative master planned shared access is not in place as depicted on the concept on page eight. So that all being said, we are suggesting the following wording for comment number four. The applicant shall close the existing driveway connection to West Franklin Road as part of the parking lot playfield development to prohibit this driveway from being used to access either the playfield or the parking lot. Closing of this driveway shall not affect the potential development of the south portion of the parcel. Any potential future development will be subject to local code and zoning requirements and will have its own development agreement. So thank you. That's all I have to say. We got a number, item number four, and I'll close with that.
Thank you, Mr. Beerline. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Beerline, so I understand the concern about the permanent closure and ability to resell that, or if you're gonna do a one-time split or a subdivision of that parcel later. And I guess, is the concern is like, because this is a development agreement that overlays the whole thing, that it could impact that, even though it does have to come back before us for further development?
If that's closed off and curbed up, it'll, we're questioning whether or not we'll prohibit the ability for us to sell the, the site in the future. And we're just recommending that the driveway, you know, be closed, but the future of how that's developed, whether, you know, a new driveway needs to be put in or it's accessed some other way, that that's determined in the future. Whatever we put in there now could likely need to be taken out, you know, when the property is developed.
Do you have a plan for how you guys would block it off or close it off?
We could put a, some sort of barricade across there, whether, you know, that's a concrete barricade or a wood barricade, or it could be a number of things, I guess, some signage there.
And Joe, do you have any comments in regards to the language that Mr. Beerline had provided?
Commissioner Fitzgerald, commission, I, I do not, honestly. I would kind of lean a little bit on legal on, onto how much I can and can't say with that kind of condition. But the language is, it sounds fine to me. I, it is implied in our processes, but to have it specifically stated, I understand the applicant's request for that, and just to make it clear.
And Joe, if we're gonna close it off, what would be city requirements, or what would be you like to see if we're gonna close it off for temporary? Is there something we can put in, into the, into a motion?
Commissioner Fitzgerald, commission, I would recommend some type of bollard, as if, same as we use with emergency accesses for the fire department, things that could be removed. And then if they need to be permanently removed, they can, they can easily be fixed that way, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
I'd recommend maybe the, the applicant can be directed to work with the staff to make sure that what they put up complies with code.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
Thanks, Andrea.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Bill, go right ahead.
Yeah, if, if the applicant's looking for flexibility, I think we can certainly do that. My recommendation, I'm looking at the staff report and that provision number four, and I like the idea of, obviously, they're gonna have to do some landscaping across that frontage because it's an arterial roadway, and they're not subdivided at this time. So we're, we only recognize this as a single parcel. So that improvement's gonna have to happen with the ball field, so even if they keep the curb cut, there's still gonna be a buffer across that frontage to prevent vehicle access. But if the applicant needs flexibility, we can simply say that they'll close that existing driveway with landscaping as depicted on the concept plan with the expansion of the parking lot and the ball fields, and that future access from Franklin Road will be reviewed and approved with the future subdivision in accordance with UDC 11383. That allows the, that particular section of code allows them, allows council to grant a waiver to, for access to the arterial roadway. So I think Mr. Birlane's testimony said he wanted some language in there to comply with local codes. Well, that's the local code, is that you comply with UDC 11383. And that at the time that they come back and do a comprehensive plan map amendment, rezone of that property and subdivide that property with the hopes or with the intention of going commercial, we can look at this development agreement again. As Joe stated, they're gonna have to modify this agreement, and then access will be on the table again in accordance with UDC 11383.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Mr. Beerline, do you have any follow-up to that? Can I understand where we're headed?
Yeah, I have two things. That sounds great to us, and we really appreciate the, you know, willingness of seeing Meridian to work with us on that. So that sounds fine, and we have full confidence we can work with Mr. Dotson, Mr. Parsons to figure out exactly what we need to do there.
I have one other comment that's not related to number four, if we're ready to move past that.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, sir.
Mr. Chair, actually, just in looking at the ACHD report, they actually say, show that there's two driveways that are accessing from that piece of property, so just want to make sure that there's two driveways that are on the ACHD report, so I just want to make sure that we're all of that is consolidated in the staff report or considered.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Beerline, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. I know that our drawing currently shows on the north side of the development that we would develop both sides of Aviator. The school currently owns the property that we're talking about here today, and then the 10-acre piece that's on the north side of Aviator. So the requirement makes sense. I just want it to be known that the school is intending to sell off that 10-acre piece of property north of Aviator. And they're planning to do that as soon as possible. The sale of that will help to fund this parking project. So at some point, you know, if the school is under a development agreement to develop both sides of Aviator, it's likely that, that north side of Aviator will be owned by somebody else prior to the school getting toward, to construct that work on the north side. It'd be the preference of the school to only have to develop the south side. But at this point, we, we do understand why the requirement is for both sides to be developed because it is their property.
And I don't want to speak for staff or the other commissioners, but I think in, hopefully, in your negotiations with whoever you're selling it to, that's part of your negotiations. And I obviously don't want to tell you guys to do your business, but I hope And I obviously don't want to tell you guys to do your business, but hopefully you can work that into your discussions, whoever you're going to purchase it with or whoever you're selling it to.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Commission, just to be clear, if you guys were to change or request me to change that condition. Proper language would likely be half plus twelve, as is the standard for that. Just to, just to be clear on that.
Joe, do you have an opinion on that?
Commissioner Fitzgerald, commission. Not specifically, I do understand where the applicant is coming from. And like he said, he understands where I came from in my staff report and they currently do own it. It is in line with what ACHD staff report states, but when it comes to funding, I get it. If they can have a developer pay for it. You know, that would be ideal, you know, but there's also no guarantee that that will get sold off. But it just, it's a little bit shaky to do that, you know, and it's, it's going to be the street, but also the. You know, the sidewalk as well. So all of that needs to be taken into account.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Bearline, did you have any additional comments? For us?
No, I think Joe said it well, it's kind of a. We understand that it's something we have to do. I just wanted to throw it out there. So that there was understanding on what likely will happen. And and you're right, I mean, we'll probably have the school likely have to work that out with. The developer, but I thought it might be a good thing for the city to understand.
No, we really appreciate it. And I hope you understand, we're, we only have one try to usually making these kinds of. Like outlining what we want everything to look like when it's all said and done. And so hopefully we can find a balance there.
Appreciate it. The budget is always a concern for. That's kind of where we're coming from.
Okay. Appreciate it. Are there any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay, Mr. Bearline, we appreciate it. Well, if there's anyone in the public that would like to testify, we'll let you close. So we appreciate it. We'll be back to you in a second. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who's decided to testify on this application?
Mr. Chair, no one is signed in for this project.
Okay. If anyone online would like to testify, please raise your hand or do star nine on the phone and let our clerk know you'd like to testify. We've been a little bit of pause here so we can make sure everybody is squared away. Going once, going twice, hearing that. Mr. Bearline, did you want to read? Did you want to say anything else? I think I'll give you one more chance.
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time tonight.
We appreciate you being here and thank you for being a part of that process. We appreciate it. With that, can I get a motion to close a public hearing on file number H twenty twenty dash zero zero four two?
So moved by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H twenty twenty dash zero zero four two. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both say? Motion passes. Commission, is before you properly before you any comments that we want to start off?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pittsir.
Yes, I'm in favor of this. I think that for safety reasons, I think this is a wise decision. To not have the children cross that street. So I'm, I'm totally in favor of this and and to have the amendment to. Close the West Franklin exit with under U UDC eleven three three.
Thanks, Commissioner Pittsir. Additional comments?
Mr. Chair, quick, quick question on that ten acre parcel that's on the north side of the property. What is that currently zoned?
Joe, can you comment? I don't have my map in front of me.
Commissioner Steel, commission, yes, it is currently zoned to ME and I guess. Before we skip over a bunch of stuff, just quick history on that. Originally, when the, that was their line of annexation was that northern parcel, that ten acre parcel, and then they did these southern ones. And in order to get an education institution on there, they. They actually did a comp plan map amendment to do the ME zoning rather than. The medium density residential future land use, which would have probably been our eight or our fifteen. They chose to do a comp plan map amendment and then change it to ME. With this application, we had directed them that, you know, as long because you're not doing. Anything more than a parking lot in ball fields that you should just rather than try to do another comp plan map amendment. Just try to come in under the medium density residential and zone it residential and then do the improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Commissioner Steel, did you have any comments on the on the app going forward or just questions?
I. I echo Commissioner Pittsir that to me, this seems like a smart move to move that. Field over closer to the to the school and in direct access. Other than that, the closing off the driveways there to Franklin is. I can kind of go, I can understand both sides of it. So I'm just hoping when we're not opening ourselves up to. Something in the future that might get a little sticky on that. As far as what we're going to see coming in front of planning and zoning and going to the city council. So. I'm a little hesitant about it, but I completely understand why it is they want to do that. So. Again, I can kind of go either way on that. The rest of it looks good.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Grove, Commissioner. Do you have any thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, sir.
I don't have any concerns with this project. It looks good to me and looks like a good use of what they have to work with.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCarroll.
I would be in supportive of this as well.
And I'm, I'm in agreement with all the comments that have been made. I understand the. Making sure that when they're going to sell something, especially with a budget of a charter school, they have to make sure they can resell things to get. The project put in place where they want it. I know they're selling off the north portion, but making sure access is available when an application comes back in and they try to sell it. And that's pretty important. So giving them an ability to work with staff to find a minimal. Way to temporarily close that and or at least make sure that the language reads that they can. It's closed until they go to sell that parcel or to redevelop it. I'm okay with that. It gives us the ability to get another bite at the apple when it comes back through, but it doesn't. But it closes it off right now. So there's not access. So it's a balanced point. So I'm okay with that. That's the direction the commission wants to go.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Holland.
Go right ahead, Lisa.
I think I agree with what everybody else said too, and I wrote down some rendition of what all the comments were related to what needs to change in the staff report. So. At this point, I think everybody's gotten a chance to talk. I'd be happy to take a stab at a motion if we'd like.
Go right ahead, Mary.
After considering staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to city council file number H dash twenty twenty dash zero zero four two. As presented in the staff report for the hearing of May twenty first, twenty twenty. With the modification of item number four in the staff report. That the applicant would close off the access to the driveway of Franklin Road with the landscaping as depicted on the concept plan. For purposes related to the sports field use with the school and that the southern parcels access to Franklin could be reevaluated at a future date. For potential commercial development. And that the applicant would work with staff to refine the specific language in the staff report for item number four. To be coherent with city code prior to the city council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval of file number H twenty twenty dash zero zero four two. Compass Church School, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. And Mr. Bearline and the Compass crew, I hope everything goes well. We wish you luck and we appreciate you guys being here. Moving on to the next application on docket is H twenty twenty dash zero zero one zero. Idaho Central Credit Union at three one five two West Peak Cloud Lane. And before we go to the staff report. I want to, we're all disclosing things this this week, so. I just want to, full disclosure, I am, work for the Northwest Credit Union Association and ICCU as one of my members. I don't have any, there's no financial repercussions on this either way. I'm just a trade association representative for them. But I just want to make sure, full disclosure, I think I can be impartial to this application, but I want to put that out in front of the commission for any comments or concerns.
No concerns here.
Yeah, no concern.
No concern.
Mr. Chair, my, Mr. Chair, my only concern is that flag behind you.
I love my flag, but thank you.
Otherwise, no concerns.
Welcome back, Commissioner Castanelli. Thank you for your comments. I got that flag from one of my coworkers who thought my background was too weak and he was a fellow coo. I appreciate the comments. With that, let's start the staff report on the ICCU at Ten Mile and Franklin, I believe.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. The next application before you is a request for a conditional use permit. This site consists of two acres of land, it's on CG and is located at three one five two West Peak Cloud Lane. At the southeast corner of West Franklin Road and South Ten Mile Road. To the north and west is vacant undeveloped lands on RUT. To the east is commercial property in the development process, zone CG. And to the south is a multi tenant building with a drive through zone CG. A modification of the existing development agreement was approved on Tuesday night by city council for the proposed site layout and amended concept plan. For the development agreement. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed use community. A conditional use permit is requested for drive through establishment for a financial institution, Idaho Credit Central Credit Union. Within three hundred feet of another drive through facility, Happy Teriyaki to the south as required by the UDC. The proposed site design is consistent with the specific use standards listed in the UDC for drive through establishments. And with the standards listed in the UDC for self service uses, i.e. ATMs, as noted in the staff report. Access is proposed by a private drive aisle from South Ten Mile Road that runs along the southern boundary of this site. No access is proposed directly to Ten Mile or Franklin Roads. The existing drive through to the south and the proposed drive through are separated by an east west driveway from Ten Mile Road. Therefore, no traffic conflicts exist between the two sites. Additionally, the property to the east is separated from the subject property by the Ten Mile Creek, which is partially piped in this area. Street buffer landscaping was installed with development of the subdivision along Ten Mile and Franklin Roads. Parking lot landscaping will be provided with development of the site in accord with UDC standards. Conceptual building elevations and perspective renderings were submitted, as shown, consistent with those approved by council with the recent amendment to the development agreement. Final design is required to comply with the design standards listed in the architectural standards manual and the design guidelines in the Ten Mile interchange specific area plan. Next slide, please. Thank you. Written testimony was received from Mark Hazel, the applicant's representative, and in agreement with the staff report, staff is recommending approval. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thanks, Sonia. Any questions for staff? Hearing none?
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Holland.
Sonia, one question to you is the placement of the drive aisle. Are they going to have some sort of. Crosswalk in front of where the cars are going through the driveway because it looks like most of the parking is further away from the buildings. People are going to have to be walking. In front of where the driveway driveway is.
Chairman, Commissioner Holland, Clerk, could you go back to the previous slide, please? Previous, sorry. So you can see the buffers there. Through the buffers, there's walkways to the main building entrance from Franklin and Ten Mile, and then further to the east in the parking area, the darker shaded areas are also sidewalks. So they're delineated. Staff doesn't feel it's an issue.
Thanks, Sonia. Yeah, that helps seeing it. The pathway goes to the east and then north instead of just north in front of the driveway. I appreciate that. Yes, thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. Madam Clerk. Do we have our applicant?
Is that Mr. Heesel? I'm on the line. Yes, yes, sir.
Hi, sir. Thanks for being with us tonight. We appreciate your time and please state your name and your address to record and the floor is yours.
Absolutely. Thank you. My name is Mark Hazel with Lombard Conrad Architects. Address is one two two one Shoreline Avenue. Boise eight three seven zero two. I have no, no issues with the statements that Sonia has made. She is accurate. With her description of the project and I appreciate her assistance on this. The, the, the items as described in the staff report, we do not take issue with. We have submitted prior site plans. That showed this drive through lane or these drive through lanes for this financial institution on the north side of the property, but that was not consistent with the future development plans. For this ten mile area. So we did relocate the drive through and emergency exit lanes to the south side and also increase the height of the building. To be more consistent with the future development plans for ten mile. With that, with the drive through lanes on the north side, that would indeed get the, get the drive through lanes and pedestrian access from, from parked cars on the south side. Would make a larger separation, putting the building in between the two. But but in order to meet the frontage requirements for ten mile and Franklin. We had to relocate that those drive aisle lanes to the south side of the facility. We have provided that sidewalk that goes to the east and crosses over. In the, in the effort and attempts to make sure that we're keeping pedestrians and. Keeping people exiting their vehicles from walking directly in front of the the drive through area. But as far as the staff, staff report is concerned, we did not have any, any concerns with the report.
Thank you, sir, very much. We appreciate it. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
Just a question or just a comment. I appreciate you explaining that originally it was on the north side because that was one of my questions and I think you must have been intuitive and guessing that we might have been asking that. Why it wasn't on the north side instead of the south side for the drive aisle. But that makes sense and I, it looks like a nicely laid out concept plan. In the, the landscaping looks really nice on it too. So thanks for going to the extra work to show us some visuals.
Yeah, our pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Hazel, you went in front of city council with some adjustments to the development agreement just last week, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a, we had a, our hearing on Tuesday. And per, I believe, article one of section six. We were, as long as we had council approval, that was the only condition in the staff report that was, was up in the air or needed to be decided on prior to. Getting full approval, receiving full approval in the staff report. So I believe that based upon our. Based upon being approved on Tuesday evening's hearing that we have met all the conditions in the staff report is. Is in full agreement with the development of this, of this financial institution on this site.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Mr. Hazel, if there's public comment, we'll come back to you and let you close, but we'll touch base with the clerk and see if there's any public. Testimony that we need to take first and then we'll come back to you. Adrian, are there anyone who'd like to testify in this application?
Mr. Chair, we had one person sign in but did not indicate a wish to testify.
Okay. Again, if there's anyone who would like to testify in this application, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or on the Zoom app. Or hit star nine and let the clerk. or hit star nine and let the clerk know that you'd like to testify and we'll get you squared away. That pregnant pause waiting for everybody to resume meeting. It seemed to be doing that a lot lately. So hearing there's no public testimony, Mr. Hazel, do you want to have any additional comments?
I would, my only additional comment would be in regards to the easements on the east side. Just, just so that you're more familiar with this site. We are somewhat locked in with the building and infrastructure placement for things like columns for hardscaping for the building itself. Due to the irrigation district easement on the east side, it's highlighted on the site plan with the, the dash line. So the location of this building, all being consistent with the 10-mile development plan is also somewhat landlocked into its current location on the west side of this, these, these properties that we are consolidating. That'd be my only additional comment.
Okay, thank you. Before we close the public hearing, any additional questions from the, from the commissioners? Okay, hearing done. Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate it. We will deliberate and go from there. So with that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing on H 2020 dash zero zero one zero?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Team, this is a conditional use permit, so it's, we are the approving body. Are there any comments? Anyone want to kick it off?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castanelli.
I'll start off. I'll just throw in some extra fluff here. I love the design. I think it fits in well with the, with the whole, that whole 10-mile development. I don't have a problem with it. I know there's, we've, we've looked at situations around town before where we have multiple, multiple drive-through windows that are close to one another. And that's what we're looking at here, and they don't ever seem to be an issue. Not only that, banks, it looks like there's about four lanes there. I've never seen, you know, more than about three or four cars at a, at a bank at any one time around town. It's as long as we get to open the lobbies one of these days, but so I don't see it as a problem. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCollum.
I agree. I think it's a nicely laid out project and fits in well with the surroundings, and I would be in support of it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I would agree with the other comments. I, I think it's a nice looking building. It will be a nice addition to the city. My only challenge when I first looked at it was where the parking was related to the drive-through because people have to walk a little bit further to get to the front of the building. But I appreciate the applicant's response on why they flipped it from the north to the south. So it makes sense.
Very good. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Grove.
Just echo everything. I think applicant, like Commissioner Holland said, explained the parking setup well. And I think this will set that corner for the development area quite nicely.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Steele.
Same as everybody else. I just, I do like the way that it fits into, essentially, like the applicant said, it's, it's somewhat landlocked with Ten Mile Creek over there and the easements that are on it. So I think the way that it fits into the piece of property is actually aesthetically pleasing as well. So the only thing I'll say is owning a large truck, it's, it's hard to make that hard left into the parking lot and get around to the lanes, but not everybody has that problem. So other than that, I think it's a, it's a great design and the way that the parking was flipped and everything to fit in there, really. To me, it really looks, really looks nice. I think it'll function well.
Mr. Pitts, do you have any final comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I think it's beautiful. I mean, I think the landscaping and everything, I, I really appreciate the applicant's efforts in, in showing us the, the concept. So I'm totally in favor.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCollum.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H dash 2020 dash zero zero one zero, I think.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, before we have a second, this is Andrea Pogue. I am just unable right now to pull up the staff report to double check. I just want to make sure the record's clear that the CUP, if your motion is to approve, and secondly, then that's your vote, that it needs to be contingent on the MDA findings being approved by City Council. So because they were, they, you know, they just heard it, they approved it, but it has to come back on consent agenda to be finally approved, those findings of fact. So I just want to make sure, I, I don't know if you could direct a question to staff and make sure that's in the staff report. I think it is, but I couldn't pull it up to double check, and I just want to make sure we have the correct motion.
Pretty sure it's there, but I'll, Sonia, can you answer that question?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Pogue, the future development of this site is required to comply with the existing development agreement as amended. And it has that file number. Approval of the subject conditional use permit is predicated on council approval of a modification to the development agreement to update the concept site plan and building elevations, consistent with that proposed with this application. So I think, I think we're covered.
Thank you. I thought so, too. I just couldn't pull it up to double check, so I wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Volt. We appreciate it.
So we're good as is. Sorry. We're good as is without modifying the staff. Okay.
Thank you.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H dash 2020 dash zero zero one zero as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of May 21st, 2020. Commissioner Holland, seconds.
I have a motion and a second to approve file H 2020 dash zero zero one zero. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Mr. Hazel and the team, I really appreciate you guys being here. We wish you good luck and I'm sure we'll see you again in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down to our last item on our agenda is file number H 2020 dash zero zero two four, Tana Creek subdivision. And Commissioner Holland, I think we need to start with you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this is Commissioner Holland. So I just wanted to disclose, my husband works for CDH Homes, and I saw that they were listed as the direct applicant on this project. He is a construction superintendent that works out in Caldwell. He's not involved in the land use planning, nor is he involved in this project. We haven't talked about it ahead of time or anything, but I just wanted to disclose that just to make sure that there were no conflicts. And I can be impartial.
Any concerns or questions for Commissioner Holland?
None here.
No concerns.
And I have none either. So we will move forward. Thank you for the disclosure. We appreciate it. I think we're all on the record this evening. Anybody else want to disclose anything? With that, we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. The next application before you is a request for a rezone, a preliminary plat, and a conditional use permit. There is also a concurrent development agreement modification request that does not require commission action, only City Council. This site consists of 38 acres of land, its own CG, and it's located at six seven five West Waltman Lane, west of Meridian Road on the north side of I-84, south of Waltman Lane. Adjacent land uses and zoning to the north are rural residential properties, Zoned RUT and R1 in the county. To the west are single-family residential properties, Zoned R4. To the east is mostly vacant undeveloped land with some residences along Waltman Lane, and to the south is Interstate 84. History on this project, this property was annexed back in 2008 with a conceptual development plan for a commercial development consisting of commercial, office, hotel uses. However, the property was not developed as planned. In 2018, a plan was submitted very similar to that proposed with the subject application that was denied. At that time, the property was designated on the future land use map as commercial, and a map amendment to medium-high density residential was proposed. Because the city was working on a new comprehensive plan for the city at that time, which included changes to the future land use map, council determined it was not in the best interest of the city to approve the application at that time and preferred the applicant participate in the comprehensive plan update that was in process rather than making changes out to the map outside of that process. As part of that process, the future land use map designation for this site was changed. It is currently designated medium-high density residential, a narrow three-acre strip along the west boundary, and mixed-use community on the remainder of the site. The applicant is requesting a modification to the existing development agreement to replace the agreement with a new agreement, allowing a mix of single-family residential detached, townhome, and multifamily residential apartment uses to develop on the site in place of the commercial development previously proposed. The existing development agreement includes two different concept development plans for the site. Clerk, if you could advance the slide, please. Waiting, waiting for the slides to catch up a little bit here.
I was there. Is this the right one?
Not, right there. Thank you. So these are the two different concept plans that are included in the development agreement. They depict 400,000 square feet of professional office, hotel, big box retail, and smaller retail spaces. Next slide. The proposed development plan depicts a mix of single-family residential. I think we've got a little bit. Okay, there we go. Townhome and multifamily residential uses, which will provide a transition in zoning and uses to the existing homes to the west and existing and future residential uses to the north, with multifamily as a transition to future commercial and office uses to the east. Because the development plan for this site has completely changed from the conceptual commercial development previously approved and terms of the agreement are no longer applicable, staff supports the request for a new development agreement to replace the existing agreement. A rezone of 38 and a half acres of land from CG to the R8 District, which consists of 10.13 acres, to the R15 District, which consists of 12.2 acres, and the R40 District, which consists of 16.14 acres, is proposed, consistent with the comprehensive plan future land use map designations for this site. A preliminary plat is proposed, consisting of 142 buildable lots and 18 common lots on 38 acres of land. The plat is proposed to develop in four phases, as shown on the phasing plan on the right. The off-site construction of a bridge over the Ten Mile Creek and extension of Corporate Drive from the north to Waltman Lane with a detached five-foot-wide sidewalk along the east side of the street is proposed to take place prior to issuance of building permits in Phase One. The off-site replacement of the bridge over the Ten Mile Creek and widening of Waltman Lane and construction of a five-foot wide attached, excuse me, detached sidewalk along the north side of Waltman to Meridian Road is proposed prior to issuance of building permits in Phase Three. And construction of the berm along I-84 with associated Phases Three and Four. Because noise from the freeway will affect future residents in this area, staff is recommending the noise abatement in the form of a berm and wall as proposed. It's constructed in its entirety with the first phase of development as a provision of the development agreement. Additionally, staff recommends the Waltman Lane improvements, including the bridge, take place prior to issuance of building permits in Phase Two rather than in Phase Three as proposed. A conditional use permit is proposed for a multifamily residential development consisting of 272 apartments unit, apartment units on 16 acres of land in the R40 District. Access is proposed by the extension of Ready Drive, a local street at the west boundary of the site, and two accesses from Waltman Lane, a future collector street at the north boundary of the site. One public street connection in the single-family residential portion and one driveway connection in the multifamily portion of the development. Public streets, alleys, and common driveways are proposed for internal access within the single-family portion of the development with private driveways within the multifamily portion of the development. Parking is proposed for the multifamily development in excess of the minimum UDC standards. A total of 518 spaces are required, and a total of 548 spaces are proposed for a total of 30 extra spaces. A detached 10-foot-wide sidewalk is planned along the south side of Waltman Lane. Internal pedestrian pathways are proposed through the central common area to amenities in the single-family residential portion of the development and provide connectivity to the common areas and amenities in the multifamily portion of the development. A 10-foot-wide segment of the city's regional pathway system is proposed along the west side of the Ten Mile Creek along the east boundary of the site with a pedestrian bridge over the creek for interconnectivity with the future commercial development to the east. A 20-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Waltman Lane, and a 50-foot-wide buffer is required along I-84. The buffer along Waltman is proposed to contain a three-foot-tall berm, and the buffer along I-84 is proposed to contain a nine-foot-tall berm with a five-foot-tall wall on top of, to buffer the residential uses from the noise of the freeway. Qualified open space and site amenities are proposed in excess of UDC standards. A total of 3.14 acres or 14.3% of common open space and amenities consisting of children's play equipment, pathways, and a basketball court are proposed in the single-family portion, and 4.07 acres or 25.7% of common open space and amenities. Clerk, if you'll go back one slide, please. Consisting of a clubhouse, swimming pool, shade structure, fire pit, internal pathway, a segment of the city's regional pathway with a pedestrian bridge across the creek, and children's play equipment are proposed in the multifamily portion. Next slide. Concept building elevation photos were submitted for the proposed one- and two-story single-family homes with a mix of alley and front-loaded units. Two-story townhomes and two- and three-story multifamily structures. The three-story apartment buildings will be located along the east boundary adjacent to the future commercial uses. Single-family homes along the southern boundary will be a single-story in height. Written testimony has been received from a few folks on this, and I'll just go through and hit the highlights. Michael Swenson, he is opposed to the project due to traffic concerns, and he doesn't feel Waltman and the Waltman-Meridian Road intersection can handle the traffic generated from the proposed development. The need for sidewalks on both sides of Waltman, not just one. And from Bill Kissinger, he has concerns pertaining to emergency access to the site, overcrowding in area schools, traffic, provision of sidewalks and bike lanes, preference for the property to develop with commercial uses to bring more jobs to Meridian. And lastly, from the applicant, Matt Schultz, he's the applicant's representative. In his response to the staff report, he is requesting a modification to development agreement provision A1C to require the reconstruction of the bridge, widening of Waltman Lane and sidewalk on either the north or the south side of Waltman to Meridian Road prior to issuance of building permits in Phase Three instead of Phase Two. The applicant states that they'd like to serve Phases One and Two with the corporate extension while they demolish and rebuild the Waltman Bridge and sidewalks. Staff is amenable to this request with the exception of the sidewalk along Waltman. The applicant originally proposed the sidewalk off-site to be constructed to Meridian Road along the north side. Staff is concerned that if the sidewalk isn't required on the north, if it shifts to the south, as requested by the applicant for leeway on either side, that the, because the area on the north side is already developed, that we may not be able to get that in the future. So staff, that's staff's concern with that. Other than that, staff is recommending approval with the requirement of a development agreement for the provisions in the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thanks, Sonia. Are there any questions for the staff?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. This is Mr. Kaz, Commissioner Castanelli.
Go right ahead, sir.
Sonia, several times in the, in the presentation there, you mentioned commercial to the east. What if, what if someone comes in with that and wants to change the zoning on that to all residential, then we have no commercial on this piece. Is that, am I correct in that characterization?
Chairman, Commissioner Castanelli, Commissioners, that property is also, I believe that was also designated mixed-use community. Believe that was also designated mixed use community. Which would come back before you if they. Did request to do that. If you go back to that first map clerk, let me just double check that. The first slide for this project. Yeah, thank you. It is designated mixed use community. So residential uses are allowed in the mixed use community designation. We would be, because so much residential is proposed on this property, though, we would be looking for. More commercial uses on that, which, which might integrate with some additional residential uses. If, if you noticed in the staff report, staff was recommending that the medium density designation along the west boundary. Float more or less to half of this property. And then the remaining half is basically the, the multifamily portion. Which, which is an allowed use in the mixed use community designation. So. Short answer, if the developers to the east came in with a residential plan, it would be before you again and, and you wouldn't have to approve it.
Additional questions? Seeing none at this time. I see Matt is on the phone. Matt, if you'd like to unmute, state your name and your address for the record, sir. And clerk's calling up your presentation, I believe, and the floor is yours. But I think you're still muted. There we go. Matt, we have you?
Yes, hi.
How are you, sir?
Good, thanks. Matt Schultz, eight four two one, South Ten Mile Road. Excuse me, in Meridian. Great to be here with you on Zoom. This is my first Zoom P and Z meeting. I got one next week with you guys and then I got another one in Nampa after that. So I'll be busy. But it's, I appreciate the technology and the willingness of the city to keep life moving forward during this, this time. It's, it's important. This is a project some of you have seen before. A couple of years ago, a summer of two thousand eighteen, it came through. So I've been working on it now for almost three years. And we're, we're excited to hopefully get it over the goal line here. Given the, the updated comp plan, which we did participate in and, and, and the good project. That it is. I appreciate staff's report. I read it last night and Sonya did a very thorough job. And even added to some of that in her presentation this evening in terms of covering, covering all the bases and I do appreciate that. There's essentially three, three items of difference in the staff report that I'm going to concede on two right away. And one of them is the, the berm along I eighty four. Two years ago, we did get everybody to agree to let us put that off to phase three and four. But, you know, the more I think about it, we, we, we need to figure out a way to get that down in the phase one and two. Cause there is, i- it's just a good buffer visually and, and sound wise to get that done upfront. So we, we do agree with that, which was a staff condition. And then Sonya just did mention something about the sidewalk going on the north side. And if we were able to get on the south and they never get built on the north because there's an existing storage unit done in the county that got annexed in the city. And they got away with not doing any improvements. Who knows how long ago? And that's a point well taken. The reason we chose the north originally was to, cause it's a pretty clean corridor. There's room within the existing right away to get a sidewalk. That kind of leads to, to Mr. Casinelli's question about future commercial and, and what do we think's going to happen to the east? Chris, can you show that little handwritten thing I did with the ownership? Or, or do I have control? There you go. Keep on zooming, zoom zoom. Cause it is integral to our argument. It didn't scan very well, but you get the idea. That hey, even though this whole sixty eight acres on the corner of Waltman that's undeveloped now. Is mixed use to, does, does anyone parcel or an assembly of parcels need, needs to be mixed use itself as well? And, and, and it's, it's a valid question. When we looked at it originally and we stand behind it even more so now. As, as you know, Amazon and everybody else gets more and more powerful against commercial than anything. You know, quarter mile back from Meridian Road is just a nonstarter from, from a commercial standpoint. If it was good commercial, it would have been probably developed commercial already and it even looks more dim moving forward. It's, it's way back there. These notes here, I did, if you look at the bottom left hand corner, I did back in August twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen. I didn't have the boundaries highlighted. At the time, there was one parcel in the corner of Meridian and the interchange thirteen acres owned by GRH Meridian. That's Hawkins, commercial day. That's a ITD parcel. They used to have their salt pile on it. And they were able to clean that up when they redid the Meridian interchange and auctioned that off and Hawkins got it. And at the time, there were thirteen other parcels owned by a variety of other people. Well, today I went and double checked and I highlighted and read how much Hawkins owns now, two years later. Which is eleven of the fourteen parcels. We have talked to them about a month ago. They were concerned that they would be required to do residential on theirs because they would like to do a mixed use office and commercial. That's their plan. We have the same engineer. I don't know when they're going to submit something, but it's coming. They're talking and we're coordinating and. On our bridge connection and so, not that it's guaranteed, but there's a very good chance that it's going to be a mixed use commercial office. Site in the red. We provide the residential portion of that overall seventy eight, seventy acre. Mixed use plan, which is kind of what we said two years ago. We just didn't know it as, 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 as well as we do today. Given the property ownerships, it's even more strong in my mind that that's going to happen. And like Sonya said, if, if. And they could propose some residential, but their, their heavy commercial office is their focus and that's what they want to do. So, so that's what we're standing behind is that we think this is a good E, west to east. Transition of R eight, R fifteen, R forty and then whatever they propose. Probably a commercial use that allows a mixed office and commercial. When this was approved, shoot, eleven years ago now, or twelve years ago as commercial, our site. If you can go back, Chris, just to the original color, color landscape plan, that'd be great. It had those, those two site plans that Sonya showed at over ten thousand trips a day. In traffic on those commercial sites and our traffic study, we're showing about twenty nine hundred to three thousand trips per day. Well distributed throughout, you know, it's huge, only thirty percent. So it's huge reduction of what was originally approved, not that we're competing against that, that application anymore. But it is the way it is. And what's funny, I was just looking through the, through the traffic study today from, from a couple of years ago. Corporate wasn't even required as part of that traffic study. And I remember going into our pre app origin with the city and they basically said, hey, corporate will be extended. You know, whether, whether. The traffic study says so or not. So we, we've always proposed corporate to be extended. There'll also be a water line extended in that. And that leads back to the, the timing and the phasing and things like that that we propose is essentially, we think phase one and two are going to go. Phase one's going to go first, obviously. Phase two is probably going to be right behind it because it's a different use. They're not competing. And we, we've got to get corporate in first, which would be if it all goes well this winter. When the, after October and before next March, we'll get a bridge and get that road paved. So next spring. We can have that going and we wanted to get served both phase one and two with that. And fire department would be okay with that. Police would be okay with that. And then before we do phase three, we would go and. Tear out the, the existing Waltman Bridge, which is currently. Old and probably number three hundred on the list of bridges of ACHD to go fix of three hundred. Just because there's, you know, eight residents down there on a dead end road and I think it's pretty low priority for them. So they've agreed to share in the cost because it is, it's a public bridge that, you know, we don't, I mean, it's, it's old. It needs new footings. Plus with the additional right away, we're giving to make Waltman a collector. It needs to get widened as well. So we were hoping to do that and the offsite sidewalk out to Meridian all at the same time. We could do the sidewalk before that, but once we tear out that bridge, it's, you're going to get to it anyways. So it's just, it was just what we propose is what we prefer on that. But that's the only condition. That we would like changed of the staff report and I will even amend that. In that, yes, we'll put it on the north, but we dislike it to be moved to phase three instead of phase two. That's it. That's the only condition of staff that we, that we like modified. We think we've got a great mixed juice. We, we, although traffic's obviously going to change for people I hear from what they've been used to. You know, a dead end road to a road that has a corporate connection which connects to Southwest Fifth Avenue, which connects to Franklin. Which connects corporate connects up to Meridian and then you can get out to, to lender through here. Things are going to change. But looking at the traffic report, everything is within tolerances and ACHD has approved it. We did have a public hearing two years ago where the neighbors showed up at ACHD, which is kind of rare. Usually they're able to approve them. Administratively, but when somebody requests a hearing, they have it. We had it. We got it approved. We went through the, you know, that whole process and they basically said, hey, we approved it two years ago. There's no reason to go through another, another public hearing. And, but they did relook at it. So some of the, there were some minor and yet maybe, you know, depending how you look at it, major changes to this. I think for the better. I think it was good two years ago and I think it's better now. And we went in for our new pre app earlier this year with the city. They said, hey, we really like to see you guys integrate the resident, the, the R fifteen and the R forty a little better. You know, in our original site plan, we just had that middle park area, the, those lots on the north side of the middle park were, were on the west. That stub street over the apartments was shifted to the south. We just had it between two lots. They say, hey, I said, what are you thinking? You know, we had it all ready to go, ready to submit. They said, well, we, we think maybe if you turn the lots to the north. And reoriented the park and shifted that stub street to the north and opened it up, it'd be a lot better. And I said, you know what? I think that's a great idea. And so we stepped back, took an extra month or two because you got to coordinate three or four different consultants to do all that work. And, and, and got to resubmit it. So what you see in front of you right now is, I think, is the best possible. Good integration east, west. We widened that parking, wasn't even a parking lot, it was just a drive aisle. Till that we widen that out to have a parking lot and some landscape buffers and some detached sidewalk going into the apartments. And so it's, at least from five thousand feet, like we're looking at it, it's, it's integrated. And I think on the ground, you'll still see that same integration. It's just not kind of walled off, if you will, with little road in between. Try to make those, because you're not going to share driveways with apartments. You're not going to share a road with an apartment on one side. But we can open it up and make it as cohesive. And if you look at the zoning, there's even a little notch out. Where those kind of those keyhole together and I think it's a good, a good match. We want to do single stories along the highway. We, we understand noise is a concern. That berm is going to absorb a lot of it. And we don't want the houses sticking up above the berm. I, I believe it's fourteen feet total, nine plus five is what we're doing along there. And we did put the two story apartment buildings set back from the highway. And those are twos on the highway and then two story apartments against the resident, the single family. And then the threes are against the, against the commercial. Now we have thirty extra parking spaces and everybody likes extra. We've been through this several times. Everybody likes extra. I just want to point out that thirty parking spaces is equivalent of, you know, probably, you know, fifteen units. And so even though technically we could, you add another story to some of those two stories. We like our story, you know, layout. We think it's thoughtful how we storied these things and we like extras and. You know, it is what it is. So we've, and we've done extra landscaping along, along Waltman. Those buildings, I measured them today just to make sure. I believe it's fifty five feet back from the curb, the detached park strip with a ten foot sidewalk. I believe it's thirty five feet behind the sidewalk. Are those buildings. Now on corporate, not that it's bad, but there's some buildings right up against the back of sidewalk. You know, we've got a really good offset, two stories. It's not going to feel as looming. Not that that's bad what they did in corporate, but this is going to be better, I think, for the neighbors to the north. We really just tried to throw everything we could at this, get a good mix. And, and I, it was good two years ago. I think it's better now. The comp plan getting changed eliminated that, that, that high bar of a complaint. I was a little disappointed when the mayor looked at me at the hearing two years ago. In August of two thousand eighteen, he says, what's your hurry, Matt? And I'm like, hurry? And they're working on this for a year, you know, but even though they just, about two or three months earlier started the. Started the, the new comp plan review, which took about a year and a half to get through. And they just weren't in the mood. They kind of have a budget hearing that day. You could tell they weren't in the mood for A, more apartments. No matter where, if it was a good idea at that location and especially. The comp plan change at the time was just politically incorrect for some of them. One of the councilmen, the only guest fellow I got that night was adamantly in favor of it, but he's still there, which is good. So hopefully the, the comp plan getting changed, I think helps eliminate that high bar. And that we're, we're excited about it, persistent. We knew we got denied, we'd be back. And then I'm glad to find a way to, to make it even better with some suggestions from staff. And we did add some. For some reason, they were left out of our original site plan, interconnecting sidewalks through the apartments and, and all that. I did a calculation upfront. We have over three miles, three miles of pathways and sidewalks in this project. So it is very pedestrian conducive, pedestrian friendly and we're going to do that pedestrian bridge. Across there, so we didn't really want to do a vehicular bridge, one, because we're already doing two more. But two, we really did want to encourage pedestrian. We think it's a cool feature. Not warranted, fire and police didn't, didn't want it. They've got great increase in, in safety services with the, the corporate extension especially. And then this connection over to Ruddy is, is going to increase their, their response and services. Now as far as some questions from some of the neighbors, I wrote down a few notes. One of them was the sidewalk on both sides. We're going to do on the one, both on corporate and on Waltman. That, that commercial site, they're most likely going to put in that one in the next couple of years too, on the south side. It'll be ten foot. Like we're doing ten foot on the south side of Waltman. There was a question about schools. I looked at the staff report and this got brought up a couple of years ago. And one of the council members after the hearing, we were talking, she says, I'm not worried about schools. They're under capacity. If you look at those tables. And that still holds true. If you look at those tables, I think it's on the first page of your staff report. The schools in, in this particular area, I think as it is an older, a little bit older area, they're, they're not, they're not maxed out. Not that we want to do maxed out like all the other areas in town are, but this isn't one of the areas. Nevertheless, let's see if I can remember any else and please remind me if there's any other question. Let's see, the Waltman intersection, man, that used to really stink. Before the, the one way couplet was put in and the Meridian interchange was put in, it used to be just one, you know, dual lane road. Kind of curved around. I, too close to interchange, it just didn't work for anything. Well, when the one way couplet got done, I think that was two thousand ten. You know, after the commercial site got approved. I think there's five lane, there's, there's two lefts, a right and a straight through at that intersection going. If you can go to the next one, please, Chris. The next color rendering with those sidewalks on, it's one more. There it is. Oh, it said offsite exhibit. There it is. I'm not seeing the color on it though. That shows that, that exhibit.
Matt, if you can wrap it up, my friend.
Yeah, I'm right there. That exhibit shows. A really nice big beefy intersection they got, that, that, that works. One last thing, ITD got us this time. They said, this time around, they didn't show up last time. But they said, hey, we're going to spend fifteen million doing another lane between Meridian and Eagle Road here at some point in the future. We want you to pay your fair share. Like, okay, you know, what's that? And so our, our, our traffic engineer ran the analysis and all that. We're supposedly one percent of that. So we've got an extra fee that we're paying to ITD of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our share of, of that, that road. So we're, we're doing our fair share, building a lot of bridges, paying a lot of fees and we think we've got a great site plan that meets the comp plan. So there it is. You can see the, the big beefy intersection we got there. I just asked for your approval and I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Grove.
Schultz, a couple of questions for you. On the open space, I just had a, some. On, um, the open space, I, I just had a, some concern, is the large open space, is that intended for the entire development? Or the, um, R eight and R 15, um, designations only?
Good evening, Commissioner Grove, good to see you. I think we saw each other on the, uh, the steering committee on this, the comp plan. Good to see you. We, we have it, well, I can tell you what is going to be just for the apartments and it's going to be the pool. Uh, the pool will be for the apartments only. The other ones, they're not going to get policed. People can use, we did kind of put them close to the, close to the, uh, that east side towards the apartments on that overall plan. You can see the basketball court and playground area. And they're going to have their own playground area, a little bit smaller, um, over in the, the apartment side as well. It's not going to get policed for, hey, you're, you, you know, you don't, you live there, not here. But it will get policed for people that use the pool. It'll be limited to the people that have the apartments.
Thank you. Um, and then the, the other question, I had one other question. And it is, uh, in the northwest corner, um, of phase one, uh, where there a stub street. And I'm assuming that that street will be signed, um, with, because it looked like it could potentially go back out to Waltman is that, in future development potentially, am I understanding of that correctly?
Yeah, Commissioner Grove, thank you for that. When we went through this a couple of years ago, and I don't believe it's in our presentation tonight, but it was in the last presentation. Staff asked me to do a little layout of how that could redevelop. And it did not connect out to Waltman. It went out and it curved back over to the, to the west, um, to be extended. When we do our, and, and that may never happen, they, they may want to live there forever. They don't have to redevelop, they can stay there forever. The meantime, we're, we're going to build the fence straight across that. And if, uh, everyone wanted to redevelop, we pull down that fence and extend the road. And then we, we showed a concept, we don't have it at our fingertips right now, but it did not punch out to Waltman because it would be too close to our entrance.
I guess, uh, we just had something that came through, um, a few sessions ago where, uh, there was a potential of, um, a street going through and it was never properly signed. And so when it did come through and then the, the neighbors that were in that area, um, were upset because they didn't know that it was a potential, um, through piece. So that would be my concern with that.
Yeah, Commissioner Grove, all of these stub streets, ACHD makes us put a nice big blue sign that says, this stub street to be extended in the future. Uh, so at least our residents on our side of the fence are going to know. And, and on the other side, they're the ones that would be extending it so they would know. But yeah, they're, they make us put those up on the barricades so everybody as well aware. Because I've, I've had that happen as well, where the signs get taken down sometimes. I didn't know, I was like, oh, really?
And then I guess if, if that goes through, does that cul-de-sac, um, because of it's a sub-street, you have to have a cul-de-sac there? Would that be developed then or, um, stay undeveloped?
Um, a- as it says, we would develop as it sits. It would just be an extra wide little pop out there as that road continued on, that, uh, has some open space next to it. Um, but yeah, that would be developed as you see it. If, if nobody wants to extend it for 20 years, they don't have to. And that would just be the way it looks. So they'd be all done with phase one, right at that property line.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland, go right ahead.
Hi, Matt, thanks for spending some time with us this evening. Question about the, is, there's a, a little pathway between the single family and the multifamily. Is that a car path or is that just a pedestrian pathway there?
On the north?
No, kind of in the middle of the, the complex.
Oh, yeah, that's definitely a, um, a, a car and, um, if you can, let's see, right in this area. I don't know if you guys can see my cursor or not, but right in the middle, there's some yellow trees on either side of it.
Yep, that's there I'm talking about.
Right there. Yeah, originally that was just a road between two lots. Uh, now we made it a, you know, a parking, it's private, ACHD doesn't want anything to do with it regardless. So it's a private drive aisle. We ended up putting, um, parking on this side of it, which you can't see because those big trees covered up, uh, with some detached sidewalks and some landscape buffers. But they, the staff and we think that there does need to be some integration and connectivity there. And so we did it as best, as best as you can with the extra wide. And we got some more parking stalls out of it too.
Thank you for clarifying that. Hey, I remember the, the last time we heard this project, I, I remember talking through it with you guys. And, um, we had a, a number of different people who came and showed public testimony with a couple of concerns. One being around Waltman Lane, which sounds like some of that has been, um, fixed at this point because you guys are planning to do some significant improvements that take care of that bridge that was a problem at one point in corporate drive that was a challenge. Um, but I know that there was some concern when we last heard this about Ruddy Drive's connection, um, with the neighborhood to the west, because it would open up their ability to access Waltman Lane to get onto Meridian. Did you have more of those concerns pop up in your neighborhood meetings? Any thoughts to that again?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the question because obviously they, like I said, things are going to change out here. Uh, those people who live in the subdivision to the west of us, that was back in the late nineties, mid to late nineties. Much 1,200, 1,300 square foot homes, bigger lots. They've all been going out to lender, you know, and up to Franklin and then over to get out. That's just how we've been doing it. Um, this is going to present a little bit more effective way to get out to, uh, to Meridian Road. And, and to be honest with you, we had a couple of people show up at the ACHD hearing two years ago, but you, you'd think a lot of more people would have showed up. And I'm not saying it's not a concern, but in the traffic study, it showed that, um, there's some good distribution of that traffic, although it's going to increase, obviously, it's, it's not going to blow up and go into collector status on any of these roads. Now, to that end, ACHD said, hey, we may get a complaint three or four or five years from now about some speeding on one of these roads where people are cutting through and going too fast or, you know, people break the law. And so at that time, we will, uh, evaluate it, do a track, a speed study, which is what they do if, if they need to. And, uh, do some mitigation if they need to. And they've, they've required us to set aside in a trust fund with phase one, I believe it was like 18 or $20,000 for any potential thing that crops up. And nothing crops up for 10 years, they, they, they give the money back, but, but we've got to set aside for them in a trust fund for, you know, I don't know if that's a speed bump. I don't know if that's, I don't know what that would be, but we're not saying they're even needed, but there's a lot of different ways to get out to lender and which path are people going to choose? We don't really know. Um, but there's just several different ways to get to lender and I, I'm kind of excited about the lender overpass getting done at some point too. That's going to be even better for connectivity. But yeah, I didn't, it, it wasn't real heavy like you think it would be. It was more the people, the eight residents that live right on Waltman Lane that are in the county that have been on a private little island for all these years, and it's not going to be a private island anymore. You know, it just isn't with, with, with growth and development, so.
So one more follow-up question, if I may, Mr. Chair. So just looking at the, the multifamily piece and, you know, I, I understand the need to transition into the commercial and, um, you know, I think you guys have put a lot of thoughtful design into how you've laid this out. But looking at the number of units that are kind of on the eastern with one access to Waltman Lane and then kind of the cross access that connects with, looks like Malaysian Avenue. I, I worry a little bit still about traffic flow in there. And I also worry a little bit that, um, you, you know, if I, if, if I had the ability to design the plot and maybe take out one of those fourplex units or eightplex units to give a little more of a, a pocket park or green space for the multifamily. I would have liked to have seen something like that on the eastern side. So that way you had a couple of areas of green space in there, even though I know you've, you've done a, a great job of having a Central Park area. And it looks very nice, the way that the west side's laid out. I just worry that there may not be quite enough open space on the east side, um, for all the residents that are going to be living in those fourplexes, eightplexes that are 40 units.
There's, there are eight, 16 and 24s.
Right.
Yeah, that's what they are, but no, I mean, I, I get it. One, one thing that, that gets a little skewed is, is the size of the project being 38 acres. And we're, we're looking down on what looks small, there's actually a lot of open space. This doesn't really just scare, I mean, it's not real apparent. If you look, we've got some good, uh, good playground down here in the middle. We've got the linear open space along here and then a very 5,000 square foot clubhouse, pool, covered area, barbecue area, and just a really, we, we really do think we've, we've got the, the amenities covered. And there is a lot of open space. I think we're over 20%. And that's, and we can't even count the buffer in that, uh, that's, that's the legit cover on that is the R 40. We are at qualified open space. Why am I not seeing that? There it is, 25%. We're at 25% on the R 40 portion of open space, which is quite, quite, quite good. We're at 14.3 qualified open space on the R eight and R 15. And combined overall, we're at 18.7. So we're not chancing on open space. And I know it may look like that because that, that park area is so much bigger over on the west side. It's, I guess it's just more spread out over on the east side is all. It's, it, this happens, we're looking at a little one acre site, we get way zoomed in and there's a big one, we're kind of way zoomed out. And, but it's there, the open space is there. So, um, appreciate the question though, because we're, we're, we're happy to flaunt it because we think we've kind of went, went kind of extra on this one.
Thanks, Matt, that's it for now.
Thanks.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seale.
Um, uh, along the lines of Commissioner Holland's, um, question as far as, uh, um, the traffic coming in on Ruddy there, I, I mean, that's a huge concern to me. I mean, when I looked at everything, um, I mean, I had some minor concerns about some stuff, but that one to me just just kind of sticks out that that is going to be a huge issue. I, I can't imagine living to the west of this development, knowing that I can get to Meridian Road through there and not in every single car using that to come through. So especially with the improvements to, to Waltman and commercial, um, where traffic can flow even better through Waltman. That Ruddy lane is just, to me, that is, is going to be hazardous, unsafe, um, even. Especially where you have, you know, some of the, uh, residential units where you have to cross Ruddy in order to get to the common area and things like that. Um, I mean, is there, would you be willing to put in and just go for it and put traffic mitigation in there to, you know, essentially slow folks down as they come through there? You know, in, in phase one?
Yeah, yeah, the Commissioner Seale, let me, let me speak to that, uh, the whole Ruddy issue. Uh, you know, right up front on day one, two and a half years ago, I said, I asked ACHD, hey, can we, can we not extend Ruddy? We know this is going to be an issue and a hassle. You know, uh, we don't want to extend it, even though there's a stub street there and it probably should have been extended 20 years ago. But, but, uh, but Waltman, uh, was a inadequate intersection over Meridian, and so they kind of cut everything off over here. Especially up here in the north, if you look, look up here, there should have been, this should have been connected right here, but they purposefully disconnected it 20 years ago because Meridian was such a bad intersection. Now that is good, ACHD says no, the traffic space says it works. Uh, we want it connected, emergency services wants it connected. And what we did for some traffic calming, there is an island right here. We did for traffic calming, an island right here for traffic calming. And the traffic calming that, that we trusted for was somewhere over here, maybe over in the west side that, that nobody could tell you where exactly it may or may not be needed right now. I mean, and that all came out at the ACHD hearing, uh, with staff. It was nothing we proposed, we just said, hey, we'll do what you want us to do. And they're like, well, we can't tell you what we want to do, we don't even know what's going to happen quite yet. Depending on what people's patterns are. And it wasn't about the people going this way through us because we've made Ruddy and it turns into Kearney there. We've made that a collector, no on-front housing. Waltman's a collector, no on-front housing. And if, if ACHD says we need a crosswalk, we'll do a crosswalk. But that's, that's where we're at on it is that this meets all of those codes and that it's distributing traffic the way it probably should have been distributed a long time ago. It just is going to happen all at once with phase one. And it's going to go up Corporate Road with phase one. So.
So just a point of clarification, I, I mean, the question was, would you be willing to put in the traffic mitigation at this point? You know, speed bumps, crosswalks, things like that?
Yeah, we, we'd be willing to do whatever they say, but ACHD has not recommended it. And so it's, it's an A, it's ACHD road. They don't like speed bumps, so if they actually have them, they don't think we need speed bumps. I'd be willing to put them if they said I needed them, but it's not something they've said we need to do on our site or offsite right now. They just have. It's not because I asked them not to tell me not to do it, it's because they just, they don't want it. I've, I've ran into this situation before where residents requested speed bumps on a cul-de-sac even. And they said, I'm not going to do that. You know, so everybody's going to have an opinion, I want a speed bump to be put in. But they do a, they do a study, a speed study, and then they said, who's going to pay for it? Is the HOA going to pay for it? Are we going to pay for it? And they go through that whole process and we've set aside money to go towards that. Whenever they decide that needs to be done or not, maybe not, it needs to be done. I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm a civil engineer, not a traffic engineer, but we, we, all the engineers on the traffic have said this thing works. The way we have it designed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Seale. Any additional questions? At this point?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pitts.
Uh, I, I'm going to have to be echoing some of these concerns with, with Ruddy Road. I mean, even a, a roundabout or something that went, went through there that, that needs some sort of calming. It's almost like a, a straight shot around that curve, uh, on, onto Waltman. Yeah, there's a, a nice park area there, but I just wonder if it can be redesigned to have a, a roundabout or something that they have to make a bigger curve before they, they take a, a right before they take that, that curve on to that left. Some, some type of redesign for that. Is, is, is that something that you would look at, Matt?
Commissioner, uh, we, we think the curve and like I said before, the, the island right here, which presents a little bit of a, a detour. And, uh, we have detached sidewalks, that curve is, is going to slow people down. I mean, that is a ta- traffic calming feature. Isn't just a straight shot out to Waltman, there is a curve and that provides a traffic calming feature. And I think to do a roundabout in this location, um, like, again, like I said, if, if ACHD thought we needed one, if the traffic experts, the guys that do this every day thought we needed one, we would, we, we would do one, but they just, they don't. And we've, we've done some good little traffic calming measures and we've designed the curve to their, their standards for collector roads for people to obey the speed limit on that collector road. And nothing's going to prevent them from speeding on any road in here other than, uh, getting a ticket. But, but we really do think that, uh, I think to speculate on, um, just, it's, it's going to be totally dangerous around there. I, I, I'm, I'm just not totally agreeing that I think it will.
Okay, thank you. I just have some concerns with, with that traffic right there at the park.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, Matt, we'll be back to you to close, um, after we take public testimony.
Thank you.
The comments and thoughts, and we'll be back to you shortly.
Thanks.
Uh, Matt Clerk or, or Mr. Clerk? Um, do we have, uh, I see we have the Mannings.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, yes, we have two people signed in, one which, uh, expressed a desire to testify and that would be Claire Manning.
Okay.
Good evening, current commissioners.
Evening, sir. Please give us your, uh, name and your address for the record and, and the floor is yours.
Okay, uh, this is Claire and Carrie Manning here at, um, 650 West Waltman Lane. So, you know, we agree that, you know, residential is a, a good target use for this development. And I acknowledge that this is a proposal that, um, decreases traffic from the previous proposal. However, an improvement does not mean that this is the right solution for this area. It's easy to get excited with the developer's presentation, um, and all those great renderings. However, I feel a lot of context is really lost to the area. And I'd like to take this opportunity to show you what the area is really like. As, you know, as council members, I, I need you to help pay attention so we can, uh, you know, employ some common sense solutions to this area. After all, the city's mission statement is to be a premier community, which means we need to look beyond feasibility and ensure we are making the best decisions for our city. So. Do I have control of the screen? I don't seem to be able to advance the slides.
Mr. Man, you do, let me read, send and see, since it's waiting for you to control. Try again here. You should have our, um, invitation to take control.
Okay, so. Oops. So am I in presentation mode on your side?
Yep.
Yes, you are. All right, thank you. So, so immediately, let's take a look at this, this overall area. So to, to the east is that, um, future development that I've defined, surely that's going to go corporate because, and bring a lot of traffic into the area since this is the entrance to our city. Um, directly north, there's high density, three-story apartments, um, in, in this area, which connects down to this proposal, which is, you know, R 15, um, medium density and R 40 high density. So you can see. Um, medium density and R forty high density, so you can see. This is completely out of scale from like the left of like the R four, so. And of course, all this will come through on Waltman Lane as a collector, which is a mere, um. Twenty-five hundred feet, so running those three thousand new trips a day through that twenty-five hundred feet is going to be. A, a big concern, especially, you know, once you connect those neighborhoods over here, so to answer the Commissioners' questions. Um, yes, all eight of us over here are concerned about this traffic. And, uh, you know, my, my real concern is, you know, perhaps on this traffic study, you've underestimated the real amount of traffic that's going to come through here. And I think it really is going to put a dangerous situation for, you know, some of these kids in the area. Um, so moving right along to keep on schedule, let, let's take a look at what it really takes to get in and out of this, uh, division, so. You know, your first option here is in Corporate, which is, um. You know, the outlet for those, you know, high density, three story apartments right onto Meridian Road. Then a mere point one mile is, you know, our entrance to, uh, Waltman. So I can tell you from, you know, experience that it is extremely difficult to like merge onto this in the morning and get over here to the freeway. Without traffic hazards and, um. In a previous council meeting, the mayor did ask one of the officers if she felt this was a safety concern, and. Officer did indicate that he felt this was going to be an increase in, uh, in accidents in this area. So, and even worse concern coming back here is like into the subdivision. So you only have a few cars that this will fit, so. You know, as traffic density increases, you will essentially cut off one lane of, um, traffic into the city. So if, if anyone's actually wondering what, how this is going today, this is, you know, the traffic, you know. And the commute in the morning, so you can see this is already an over, um. Overutilized area that is going to be made even worse by these high density apartments going in. So, you know, Mister, Mister Schultz is going to be excited to tell you that I'm not a traffic engineer. But I did call some traffic engineers at the A C D, and I asked them, what, what, what are your guidelines for collectors? And the information I got was, you know, for a new collector, they're going to want to like target three thousand for like an existing collector, they'd probably go five thousand. Since this is really a dead end street with such a short runway. I, I would argue that this really should, you know, fall into this new collector, um, street kind of guideline. So you can see that you have a very razor thin margin between this and like what the A H C D, the traffic experts say is the new. Is the guideline for a new collector. So, you know, in conclusion, I, we feel that R fifteen, R forty zoning is inappropriate for this area. We rec, we recommend matching adjustments of divisions for. Our foes, our four zoning to minimize traffic impact on already overloaded system. You know, because inappropriate high density zoning in this area, you know, does not align with proper stewardship of community resources. So I think we need to, you know, present some smart growth here and higher population really does not equate to higher life prob, quality, so. You know, please preserve our city vision and keep Meridian a premier American community and, you know. Do not allow this to go forward in this high density zoning, thank you. Uh, can I answer any questions for, for the, um, committee?
Are there any questions for Mister Manning? Mister Manning, we appreciate you being here tonight, thank you for presentation and.
Thank you.
We'll go from here, thank you, sir. Uh, Matt Clerk, you said there was someone else possibly?
Um, Mister Chair, no, just another person signed in, but they didn't indicate a wish to testify.
Okay, is there anyone else on the line that would like to testify in this application that hasn't signed up previously? Please raise your hand on Zoom or. Um, click on star nine.
Can you guys hear me?
Mister Eller, how are you tonight?
Good, how about you?
Good, uh, the, please, your address for the record and the floor is yours, sir.
Yep, my name's Nick Eller, I'm at eight fifty-one West Honker Drive in Meridian. I am in the Mallard Landing subdivision on the east side of the subdivision near, uh, the. The ruddy drive connection, um, overall, uh, I don't have. You know, being a resident here, you'd think I'd have issues with the entire development itself, I don't. But there's a quick, but I do have some concerns, they've been brought up earlier, and a lot of it could be resolved if the. If we can get an exemption to not connect the ruddy drive. I've, I've been here for six years, I've talked to my neighbors, uh, we do not want that connection whatsoever. No A C H D is requiring it, I know City of Meridian has been excited about getting that connected. Problem is, is we've got three connections on the west side, so that diversifies the traffic out to lender, now you want to bottleneck everything down the one. Um, if you calculate, um, from on the west side of the Mallard Landing subdivision. And you ca- calculate that currently, it's about one point eight miles to get to Meridian and, uh. Meridian and Waltman, you make this connection now, it's one point two nine miles to get to that same intersection, so you've. From the entire subdivision on the west side to the east side, you've dropped that by half a mile, so now you've reversed all the traffic out of our subdivision. Brought that through this new development and. Uh, it, it's, it's just an absolute recipe for disaster, you guys have, the, the council had, and P N Z has said it before. It's been brought up, it's an absolute res- recipe for disaster. Um, there's other concerns I have, um, that could be resolved just by shutting that off. If the concern is having ambulance, police, fire, having quicker access into our subdivision, fine. Make it a emergency only access with a pathway, but we don't want it. The subdivision has been here since the nineties, we're used to it, we don't need access there, we're fine going around. But it's an absolute recipe for disaster, um. The other concerns is if you don't shut that off, you're closing the door on the commercial development to the east that's planned. Because you're already going to be using up your road by having this connection. So now you're going to be having a conversation about what to do with that development, so that one's been shut. And then as the gentleman before me presented, there's no room off of Meridian Road to turn into Waltman. There's, there's maybe room for five cars, and the traffic stu- study showed. At the peak afternoon, it's about two hundred and ninety-six, uh, trips per hour. Um, around that timeframe, and so you want to put that in a spot of six. And with this, uh, development, it was, uh, like adding twenty-nine hundred. Some trips a day just for this development, and we've got seven hu- seven hundred homes in our existing residential. And then we've got the potential lender overpass coming in, it, I just don't see it, you know, if. I would have no problem with the development itself if that connection would just go away, make it an emergency only access. And it would resolve a lot of problems, keep the door open for the commercial development to the east, but we don't want it. We absolutely don't want it, and for. I know there was a comment about nobody showing up to A C H D meetings and, and hearings. I've talked to my neighbors and, you know, there's some people that don't pay attention to this kind of stuff, I talked to my neighbor right next to me. About this hearing tonight, and he said he knew nothing about it, doesn't mean we don't have concerns. It just means that some, you know, it's the same thing with voting, there's a low voter turnout, people don't do it. I, I'm part of these city council hearings and I have been, um, in the past for other developments and. And so I stay involved, but it doesn't mean my neighbors don't have concerns, but we don't want it, we're used to it. It's been here since the nineties, just if it's not broken, you know, don't change it.
Mister Eller, can I ask you a quick question? So on Walt, so on Waltman, my understanding and looking at the, at Google Maps. That intersection has been significantly upgraded, and so there's, there's four lanes turning, two lanes turning left and. One lane going straight, one lane going right, that's a massive collector, in my opinion, coming out of there. So if my, if there wasn't a reason that, that they wanted to do this, can you kind of walk me through? Because I think the, obviously the money and investment's been spent, what was the purpose of that investment then?
So, so my concern is, is isn't the leaving, it's the coming back. So you get off the freeway and you try to turn onto Waltman, that's the biggest concern as far as getting into. The commercial development, the new residential development, and our residential, you, you have to think of all of those. And they did not design it, they, A C H D absolutely screwed the pooch on that intersection as far as that parcel. Uh, connecting, it, you know, and if, if you're going to tie in the west residential development where we are. This application needs to wait until that intersection is fixed again. Um, if you cut it off, simple solution, you know, take us out of the equation, we're happy, we're fine. You know, we're not concerned, we'll go away and, and be quiet and we got new neighbors, but. Um, you, if, if you tie us together, now you got three people as part of the equi- or three entities as part of the equation. Take one of them out and you've got a happy, you got a happy developer, you know, our connection to him, it doesn't affect him. He's doing it because A C H D wanted him to, just like the traffic control measures, he said he would do it. But I don't think that there's any benefit to him, it doesn't make him any more money to allow us to go through his development. Which I think he, I don't know if he still owns our development, but I believe that was a Corey Barton development, he could correct me, but. Um, w- we just don't want it, you know, ke- keep the door open for the commercial, keep, you know, allow this development to happen. I'd rather have residential there than a, a target or something in my backyard, you know, here in dumpsters, I. I, it's fine, it's a buffer, it keeps us away, the apartments, you know, at first I wasn't too hot about it, but I've warmed up to the idea, but. Just taking our entire subdivision, putting it down a, a two lane road, going through where the, so their apartments are. It's just a huge concern, and then if, if the, I don't, I can't see the map on the screen, but. You take all of those and tie that, so ruddy, Eider, Malayan. Uh, Drop Creek, Kearney, Brown Trout, all of that is going out one exit as well. So you, you group all of those together, and I think that's going to bottleneck right there at Kearney and Waltman. You're taking all of that and, and putting that out through that and that exit, and so that's going to be a right turn at a stop sign. You get our subdivision and then all those houses on that, uh, western part of this new development. I think it's going to bottleneck right at that stop sign, assuming there's going to be one right there.
I appreciate it, thank you. Uh, are any other questions for Mister Eller? Thank you so much for being here tonight, we appreciate you participating. Matt, is there any additional, uh, folks who would like to testify in this application? Chris or Adrian, do we have anybody else?
Mister Chair, yes, um, Joe Lorch.
Mister Lorch, how are you tonight, sir?
Uh, Joe Lorch, seven forty Waltman Lane, I am at, uh. Be the northeast corner of Corporate and Waltman Lane, in that farm property right there.
Okay, thanks for going right ahead.
My concern is, same as Claire Manning's concern, is just the, the traffic, um, safety going up Waltman Lane. Uh, if they open up ruddy lane, there's, there's another three hundred cars and peak hours that are going to be going up Waltman Lane. Um, getting out, you're correct, there is four lanes to get out, but there's only one lane coming back. And that left turn lane off the freeway is just going to get backed up beyond the freeway off ramp. The turn with that many cars coming back to their, to their homes. Um, the afternoon turn on that, to turn left onto Waltman Lane is just going to be a nightmare, going to be huge safety issues. Um, the, the traffic count going up Waltman Lane, there's, currently there's kids walking up the lane all the time, going up to the, to Winco. Well, I mean, especially these last three months, there's probably a hundred to a hundred and twenty kids and. People walking, using Waltman Lane like a sidewalk, going up and down Waltman Lane, and now we're going to have all these cars mixed in with it. Um. I, that's just my main concern, is just the safety of everybody on Waltman Lane and, and getting back home. Um, from Boise, turning left onto Waltman Lane. And, and, um, if we can lower this density on this, on this project, I have no problem with that. Instead of going R forty, if we can go from R four to R eight to, to R fifteen and just lower the, the amount of. People and cars and trips, I just think it's just too dense. Or, or the one street or two streets, if you count Corporate Drive, to handle all this traffic plus open up that subdivision. To the west.
Thank you, sir, very much, are there any questions for Mister Orchard? Sir, have a wonderful evening, thank you so much for being a part of this, we appreciate your opinion and, and your thoughts.
Thank you.
Chris, did we have anybody else that raised their hand?
Mister Chair, that is everyone.
Okay. Uh, Mister Schultz, would you like to close, sir?
Thank you, I appreciate, uh, Mister Manning and Mister Eller and Mister Lorch are all coming and participating in the Zoom meeting. Um, I, I, I think it's, uh, reasonable to, to say their, their, their common concern was traffic. Um, that's what I heard. Um, less density maybe, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, if it'd be that perceptible. You know, if we did R four, R eight, R fifteen, uh, apartments generate about forty percent less traffic per unit than single family does. I'm not, it'd be interesting to do a little side by side and, and see what the traffic would be if you, you did both those layouts on them. Um, but, but I do want to reiterate that, uh, that, uh. With our A C H D approvals, those, those, those don't come easy. Um, Waltman will be three lanes in front of us in terms of, uh, center turn lane. Uh, we'll have detached sidewalk where there's no sidewalk now, so in terms of improving safety. Um, it's exponentially going to be better, yeah, there's going to be cars on the road, that's where they belongs on the road. And people have still look both ways for the cross and, you know, things like that, but we're doing everything. To, to and above and beyond, um, the standards of the community that, that all developers are held, held to. In addition, we're extending that, uh, sidewalk all the way down. Um, Waltman, even though technically C H D said, hey, we'll do that a couple of years from now, you don't worry about it, yeah, well, that's suicide for me. Going into the hearing, so I'm volunteering for it, you know, so, you know, we're, we're going to do that extension, even though they, they didn't say we needed to. Um, and Corporate, I said, no, we're going to do it, you know, it's, it's, it's not a requirement by A C H D. Uh, but we're doing it on both of them for pedestrian, safe pedestrian, safe vehicular, we're doing the extra turn lane. And there's not only one way, one way into this side on Waltman, there's another way into the side on Corporate. There's another way into the side on, I think it's Southwest Fifth or Seventh or whatever it is that comes down from Franklin to Corporate. And then you have coming from Franklin, so this, this traffic isn't all just funneling all down, down Waltman, this is not. There's, there's, people live in different parts of town, they don't all get on the freeway and go downtown for work. Um, and some people may not even drive to live here, um, being somewhat close to downtown. So, so I, I, well, well, it obviously is going to change, uh, to Mister Eller's point. I asked, you know, I, I could see this would have been a home run if I could cut that sucker off and just do emergency only. You know, uh, e- even though it meets, it meets standards, that's what they want, they want the traffic to go back and forth. These roads in the back are way underutilized right now, and they're, you know, they're going to get used. Um, now, whereas maybe they didn't in the past. Um, you know, they're very expensive roads that were put in, they're, they're way underutilized, and we don't have any economic benefit. To saying that we don't want, that we want that to go through. It's designed, you can put a gate across there and do emergency only, I, I'd be fine with it. You know, the way this site's designed, it would still work, but it would not dissipate, um. The traffic as well, it would not allow easy police access, yeah, you could do emergency exit, if there's a fire, they. They either, you know, unlock the bald or go crashing through with a fire truck, if there's a fire, but you know, it's just good connectivity. I can see their point as, as a design professional, and as an ex civil engineer, I can see their point, it's not a popular point, though. Um, and it's, um, and I, and I just, we're, we're not going to incre- in, in the, in the police. At city council did not say there'd be an increase of accidents at the intersection, he did not say that. Um, and I think we are doing proper stewardship of the land by utilizing the existing services that are through the site. Adjacent to the site, using the, the intersection that was put in to, uh, u- use kind of a contrast term, density. We've, we have some, it, it's not over the top density, it's an average of ten, it's not, you know, an overall twenty. Um, this is kind of in the middle there of, of the target for the mixed use for density, so. We're, we're, we're trying to walk that line of, 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 of a medium, medium high density at the ten. Um, average and, and, and doing an efficient, uh, responsible. Um, design plan that's in conformance with the master plan and is good land use. um, design plan that's in conformance with the master plan and is good land use planning to put the services and the people where, where the transportation nodes are, I offered to, to, uh, Valley Regional Transit to put an extra bus lane. Pull out next to our site and no, we're not coming down there. Um, you just get, you just get people out to, to Meridian Road and we'll pick them up from there. It's okay, great. We're going to put a sidewalk out there. Great. You know, so we're, we're trying to do our part to, to, to be responsible and do some forward planning on, on what's good planning and R four in this location is not good planning. So, um, and the kids are going to be much safer walking on sidewalk off the road than on the road. Once we get done, trust me. It's a lot better than they are now, but, um, I, no disrespect meant to those owners. We've talked a lot over the years, uh, pre-apps and neighborhood meetings and we've talked a lot. I, I know them all well. And, um, and, and Mr. Manning, he lives right on the corner of Waltman and Corporate on the northeast side on an acre right there. And I can understand he doesn't want to see the neighborhood change and I get it. Um, but he does live on county property and surrounded by city property and this probably should have already been done twenty years ago. So, um, with that said, with all due respect, I, I, I appreciate the neighbor showing up, but but I was happy to hear that, that some didn't really necessarily have a, have a problem with our, our apartments or our density of just more of the traffic, which like I said, we've got approvals and it wasn't easy to get, but we, we've done it. We designed our site accordingly. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, are there any additional questions for the applicant or for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pitzer.
Uh, yeah, Matt, one, uh, two years ago, so I, I wasn't part of the, uh, uh, commission back, back then, but I was reading, you were denied for amongst other things, uh, that they wanted to see some commercial. They were concerned with schools and traffic, density, all of that leading to safety. Do you think that you fixed why you were denied two years ago?
Absolutely. We, uh, we were approved by staff two years ago. We were approved by P and Z two years ago. Uh, we were approved by ACHD two years ago. Um, and you get to city council and, you know, some of those summaries are a little, you know, I was there. I participated politically. It was incorrect at that time in the mayor's opinion and a couple two to three of the commi- the council members to change the comp plan. Um, and at that time, that was the overriding factor. There was a little confusion about the safety matters that I wasn't as prepared and they got brought up after the public hearing were closed to, to, to discuss, um, like the intersection with Waltman. Um, ACHD kind of gave us a pass on the sidewalk, even though I didn't necessarily ask for the pass. Well, I fixed it this time. Uh, we're, we're, we're definitely putting in the sidewalk this time. We're not letting ACHD do it later and, uh, we're putting in both, both sidewalks going north and going west with, with, um, with this development. Uh, and so uh, in terms of better presentation, yes, and, uh, and, and a few more guarantees on the facilities, yes. We, we have fixed it for the city council, but the biggest issue was the comp plan, which, which, which we meet, which isn't an issue anymore. That was the number one biggest issue.
But, uh, well, but, uh, but our comp plan still has this as mixed use and we're not doing mixed use.
We, we, yeah. We are doing a portion of a seventy acre mixed use designation on the site. We are a thirty-seven acre portion of, say, sixty-eight acre mixed use. Now, does mixed use say every single parcel has to be mixed use into itself? No. It can be part of a bigger parcel where we know the corner is going to be commercial and office. It just is. That's where commercial, if, if there's any commercial out here, it's going to be on that corner. It's not going to be back here. And office is a non-starter back here, too. So what we're showing is, um, and the access isn't that great for, for commercial back here. It just isn't. You need like, uh, overland access where you're connecting interchanges, where you need Eagle or Fairview access. Waltman's not great, you know, commercial frontage access back in there. Um, so so we are, we are mixed use. We are the residential portion of an overall residential office, commercial seventy acres.
Additional questions? Or, did you have a follow up? Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Uh, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm so moved.
Uh, one, one, one second. Commissioner Ciel, did you have additional comments?
Nope. I was just going to go ahead. Just going to motion it, but I'll just second it now.
Okay. I have a motion to, second to close the public hearing on H twenty twenty dash zero zero two four. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed. Team, the, the application is properly before you. Who do you want to lead off?
Mr. Chair, I'll jump in if that's okay.
Go right ahead.
All right, um, I've got a few things. Um, overall, I, I, the first thing I have, um, and I probably say this in a lot of the things, but, um, normally I don't like how, uh, developments are phased, um, just from the type of development to, um, you know? And I, I like that this has a mix of different, uh, develop, or different types of, uh, pieces going in early rather than, um, waiting till phased four to have all of the R forty done, um, at once. And so um, having that balance, um, over the first two phases, uh, was something that I, I like. Um, I do have some concerns with, um, what Commissioner Holland, um, addressed earlier when her question um, with the size of opens, um, continuous open space in the, um, R forty section. Um, I, I do see, you know, the developer's point in, in saying, you know, how, how much, uh, open space there is. But, um, in terms of just concentrated open space, it, it would be nice if, if there was um, a more concentrated, uh, open space in that R forty, um, area. I, I, I appreciate the connectivity of the pathway system. Um, I think that is well thought out. Um, and I actually like the, the traffic flow, um, of the development within the development itself. Um, and the, um, I'm very happy that Corporate is going to go through. I think that is going to be, um, a key piece to the connectivity of this development. Um, and would almost be a non-starter, um, for me, um, if Corporate, um, was not, um, included in this to help, um, it alleviate some of the, the traffic pressure, um, that this development will, um, bring. Um, lots of notes, uh, shared drives. There's three of them. Usually not a huge fan of shared, uh, driveways. Um, there's nine homes, it looks like, off of three shared driveways. But the, the way that the, it's mapped out, it, it makes sense, um, as to why they're there. Um, and they're not overly abundant, so I don't have as much concern with that this time, um, based on how it's laid out. Um, and I hear the traffic concerns, um, that, um, the residents have, uh, raised tonight. Um, I guess one thing that I, I've kind of been looking at is if we start bottlenecking, um, some of these, um, roads and eliminate the connectivity, we end up with a different type of traffic problem. Um, and so I would be concerned if we, um, were to limit the connectivity of this development, um, with what is already there. Uh, and, you know, we're not going to stop people from speeding necessarily, but I do see those islands, um, and the nonlinear path from Waltman to the subdivision to the west is, is being somewhat, um, traffic calming measures that I could be okay with. Um, I appreciate that this is not, um, taking a, adding to the, the school district, um, overcrowding as much as, um, some areas of development. And so I'm not concerned with that on this development. Uh, overall, I'm in favor of, uh, how this is laid out, um, and curious to see what others have to say with, about it.
Thanks, Commissioner Grove.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seal.
Um, I, I do, I'll start off with the, the positive here. The, the extra work that, um, the applicant's willing to put in on the bridges and Corporate Drive and improving Waltman and everything. Um, in my mind, they're, you know, I mean, he, he saw some potential roadblocks and got them all, all out of the way. That to me is above and beyond. Um, the, the layout of it, I like. I, I like the common area. The way that it is centrally lo- located, um, I'm a little less concerned than others about the open space um, in the multifamily area, simply because in between buildings, there's, um, you know, grassy areas and things like that. There's no playground equipment in there, but there is room to, to run and to occupy in there. Um, plus with the pathway or the roadway that, you know, essentially comes over into that common area. Um, you know, it's a, it's a small park over there, so I think that that's, um, ample um, at this point. Um, the, I mean, one of the things, um, that, I, I mean, I, I think there's a missed opportunity here to do more mixed use. Um, for them to say that, well, it's, you know, we can do this here. I, I don't think that's the spirit of mixed use. I mean, to take a parcel that's this big and to do all residential in it and simply throw on somebody else that, you know, I mean, when the next one comes in, there's going to be essentially no potential for residential to reside in it, um, even when you start butting that up against the freeway where somebody may or may not want to be, um, depending on how the access flows off of Waltman Lane. Um, and the, the biggest issue that I have with the whole thing is that connection to the subdivision to the west with, uh, with Ruddy Drive. Uh, I get that it's on a corner and, and, you know, that's going to keep people, I'm, I'm less concerned with people speeding through there than I am just with the overall volume of traffic. Um, if I look at the subdivision to the west and I look at what I have to go through, I have to get out to Linda Road. I have to go up Linda Road to Overland. I, I gotta go through a traffic signal there. Now I gotta come down Overland. I gotta do another traffic signal and then there's a couple more traffic signals before I even get out to being able to access the, the freeway. I can bypass all of that just by going down Ruddy. And, um, you know, I'm going to hit a stop sign in there. That's, that's what's going to slow me down. So I, I could, I just, in all good consciousness, I, I can't think that that wouldn't be a, you know, a, a safety issue of, of some type. Um, and to me, it's sad because the, the amount of work that the applicant is willing to do and put in for the bridge crossings for Corporate Drive and everything else for ACHD essentially to get this that wrong is disappointing to say the least, but I just don't see that. I, I, I can't in good conscious say that that's something that I would be in favor of.
So, and I, I'm going to agree with a lot of what you just said. I think the challenge, if this was going through an existing neighborhood that wasn't going to build that piece and build houses after it, they know what's going to happen. Um, I'd have more concerns. Um, I, 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 the challenges, I think, were the applicant is building out the safety mechanisms that are um, are being requested by sort of like, because there is no sidewalk on the road. There is, it's not widened and we, um, ACHD spent a, a ton of money, um, at that stoplight down the road, whether it, it's needs to be misdirected or redirected or not, I, that's remains to be seen. If we were building this and then for certainty purposes, they didn't know what, eyes went open when they were getting into it, I would have a little bit more concern. Um, but I do think, and I, I do think there's some calming measures we could put in there right now that would make it harder to be, uh, to harder to drive through there. I do think the islands, the curve, um, do cause some, or do provide some calming measures. Um, but I have no problem saying let's, let's do some calming measures to put it in there. Um, but people who are going to buy houses in this area are going to know what they're dealing with. Um, that's my only respite a little bit there, um, is there's a ton of work being done that is going to benefit the connectivity of the community and out to the freeway very quickly. And I, I think there's an offset there a little bit that we have to give the benefit to the, to the applicant. Um, on the open space thing, I, I mean, I think, I understand where Commissioner Holland's, uh, commenting on, I think there are some, I love the Mew in the middle where there's lots of open space. I really like the, the pathways to the east along that, uh, to long Timout Creek. Uh, I think it'll be nice in the, the, in those, uh, multifamily. Um, and I think the market on commercial versus three types of residential, um, I don't know if I want to put residential over in that other spot as a, on an off ramp to the freeway. So I, I mean, I, I understand not wanting to have commercial hidden away down a, a pretty rough road that may be updated now or updated with this application, but wouldn't be otherwise. So those are just some of my comments to get kind of thoughts moving. Any additional feedback, comments, thoughts?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holland. Um, you know, I think last time we saw this, we had a lot of different conversations about, um, some things here. One, putting on your, putting on my economic development hat and just thinking about where commercial likes to locate. They tend to like to have visibility on interstates or highways or places that have relatively easy access. That being said, um, you can't put single family homes right next to big commercial development. You've got to have some sort of transition. So I, I would agree that I think the applicant's done a, a thorough job in trying to create the right steps to transition to a commercial development. Um, and I, I applaud the efforts that, that they've, they've made to come a little bit further in the application since the last time we saw a similar concept from them. Um, I appreciate the Corporate Drive and Waltman Lane have a, a bigger priority that they're working on some of those sidewalk improvements. Um, I, the concentrated open space, I just, I always like to see more of kind of a pocket park or green space for people. Even though I really do like the pathway connection between the buildings and I know that it will look bigger when you're standing in front of it than it does on a, on a small thumbnail sketch. So I, I understand the comment there, too. Um, but I would have loved to have seen, you know, a little more open space next to the pool or clubhouse. So that way, you know, maybe there's a, a tot lot or something in there, um, just to give kids a little bit more r- room to run around, even though typically apartments aren't as many kids. They're more, um, you know, smaller families if they are having kids in there. So maybe that's okay. Maybe it's not a huge deal. Um, I'm losing my train of thought. I was going to go next. Sorry. Uh, I think I, I still agree with the, the Ruddy Drive connecting in. I think, you know, the, the applicant said it, that there will be a change in philosophy on how people approach this area once some of these roadways in this development comes in. And I wouldn't mind seeing some sort of traffic calming measure, it, not necessarily that it has to be a speed bump, but if there was something we could do that would help mitigate people coming off of Ruddy Drive into that subdivision that would slow them down just a smidge before they head off to Waltman Lane. That'd make me feel a little bit more comfortable, especially when you've got that big park space and you'll have kids playing in there. Um, I'd hate to see an accident where a kid gets run over, i- if it's something we can help avoid. Um, let's see. The only other concern I had was just maybe the density amount of how many units were in the R forty. Having two hundred and seventy-two apartment complexes with one access off of Waltman Lane. Um, it seems like a lot of density and I understand why they laid it out the way they did with having their forty on the east side. I don't know that I necessarily want to restrict them on how many units they can have, but I just wanted to make the notice. It's a lot of density there, um, next to an R four neighborhood. And again, I know that you've got to have that transition to the, the commercial side of things. So I get both sides of it. Um, I, the biggest thing is I wish that the commercial piece that's adjacent to them on the east was a part of this application so that we'd have a more cohesive look because it, we've had similar projects that say, well, hey, the neighbor that we're, we've talked to has an intent to do commercial and then they come back and say, we're going to put two commercial pads here and the rest of it multifamily because we feel like that's a better use. That's happened to us many times.
Yep.
Um, so that's, that is one of my biggest concerns. I wish that these projects were tied together somehow with those two developers working together on the way that that plan comes together. Um, but I know that that's not always our luxury either. So those are my thoughts for now.
And there is a tot lot in the multifamily. Just want to make sure we're clear on that. There's a playground area in the south quadrant of them. Just for information.
Thank you. I missed that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castle.
I guess it's my turn. Um, and I hit on a couple of things. My, and one of my initial concerns was that this really wasn't, you know, this didn't, uh, fulfill the spirit of a mixed use committed, community because it was strictly residential. committed, community because it was strictly residential, knowing that Hawkins owns the majority of that parcel next to it, um, or parcels, I should say. Um, and knowing that Hawkins is, I, I don't know if they do any residential. I mean, I think they're for the most part strictly commercial, which, uh, which would say to me that that's going to become commercial and, and it, you know, and it's hard. I mean, we've, we've looked at multiple things that we wish multiple parcels were, were all ones. So we could have a better, uh, vision and do something that, that, that is right for the whole area. It just, it can't happen unless, uh, somebody, unless one wants to buy the other. Um, so I'm, I'm not as concerned about that anymore because it's Hawkins. However, Hawkins could always sell it to, to a residential developer. Nothing's stopping them from doing that at some point. And then we're, and then we're in a, uh, then we could be in a bad situation. My cons, my biggest concern on this, and, and I'll, I'll touch base, as far as this development, I, it fits in the area. Um, you know, it's right, this is right up against the freeway. So, um, you, you know, I think, I think what they've designed kind of fits. Um, I would like to see Commissioner Holland and some others have mentioned, I would like to see a little bit more concentrated open space in the apartments, even one more, uh, uh, you know, like a basketball court or something like that. I see everybody that wants to play because there's nowhere to play basketball in there. You want to play basketball, you're going to go over to the, to the, uh, to the R eight, the, uh, uh, R fifteen portion. Uh, my biggest concern is Waltman Drive. Um, and I just, I, I can't come to terms with it. ACHD is, is saying twenty-eight eighty-four trips per day out of this development loan. Um, a collector, um, the numbers that I have, level of service, C level service on a collector is twenty-eight hundred, D is four thousand, E is four eight hundred. They're not even factoring in the commercial that's going to come in to that. They're not factoring in the neighborhoods to the, to the west that are all going to come through Ruddy Drive. It's going to be at, and, and people aren't going to go north onto Corporate and go out Corporate. If anything, some of the people in Corporate are going to use Waltman, uh, so that would kind of avoid a waiting at that light at, at Waltman. They can come out the back way from those, uh, those new apartments that are up there on, on Corporate, come out Waltman and, and just have a, just have a right at a, at a light instead of coming out on Corporate and then waiting through a red light at, at Waltman in the morning. Um, and certainly coming back, all those people, instead of turning there at, uh, at Wendy's and waiting to go through, they're going to turn, they're going to want to turn left onto Waltman and, and snake back up. So I think a lot of that traffic is actually going to be funneled to Waltman. That's how I see it. So I think that number off the top, even before the commercial gets developed, is going to be pushing, um, three plus, close to four thousand trips a day. So right off the get-go, they're, they're putting in a, you know, they're going to have a collector that's going to be at a service level, uh, uh, D or E is, is the way I, that's just how I see it. You're not going to stop people from the neighborhoods to the east coming through that one street at Ruddy Drive. There's not going to be, as, as the, uh, I didn't catch the gentleman's name, but, uh, the resident that lived over there, right now, there's three ways out to Linder, uh, through their neighborhood. Now you're going to be running everybody through one. And I guarantee you, uh, same thing Commissioner Seal said is instead of going out to Linder, to Franklin, to, to Meridian and going all the way around that, they're going to go straight out Waltman Lane. So you're going to be taking, I mean, that, that could be, I don't know what that, what that equates to five hundred, a thousand trips a day out of that subdivision. It's going to be coming out Waltman. So I can't, in all due conscience myself, site, it's just not planned out well. Um, I, and Commissioner Seal said he doesn't know what ACHD was thinking. I don't know what ACHD was thinking. All in all, I like the development. I think it fits. I think it'll fit. I think Hawkins will come in and do commercial on that and that'll all play together. But I just, I can't get, can't get past Waltman and how that's going to be overtaxed in my mind. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pitser.
Thank you. So my concerns on this is I think it's a great design with, with good use of, of different, going from the R eight to fifteen to forty, but it's in the wrong area. I, I'm, it's just too much density for that area. I think it was, I mean, we just did the new comp plan just December two thousand nineteen, mixed use. And I think that spirit of that mixed use, you're right along the freeway, uh, it, it should have something with some residential and some commercial. I just think that that's what it was designed for. That's what we put in our comp plan. And I think that's the comp plan we should follow. I, he's taking, like he says, seventy acres, thirty-eight acres is going for all residential and zero commercial at that point. Um, and, and who knows what Hawkins is going to be, if, if anything, for a while. So I'm, I, I like the subdivision design. I'm just not liking that, that much density for where it's at. Um, uh, I, I think the safety issues for that much traffic going down Waltman, um, and for that cross area at the park, uh, with so many cars coming off of Ruddy is something that I have a hard time, um, uh, accepting. Uh, whether they did a temporary closure until they fix the rest of the roads, uh, is a possibility or not. The density is still there. I think that he, putting the apartments on that east side for future development for commercial, uh, I think is good, but to be along the freeway, I think there should be something commercial there. So I'm, I'm not in support of this at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pearl.
Um, I'll just run down through some of the things in, in general. Um, I would be supportive of this, um, from the aspect of the transition. I think the open space is probably okay. I think it, it is hard to show that. I, I don't think it shows well, um, as what it's going to look like in person. Um, and I, I do think the corporate is going to be better placed if you look at this all together instead of just the one piece, um, that the corporate is better placed to the east. And I think that'll be a natural thing to happen. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer. So I, to get into the weeds of exactly how many cars are going to go where, um, I think people end up finding a way around stuff. I would like to see a little bit of traffic calming coming around that curve by the park. Um, if ACHD is insistent on keeping that open. Um, and I think the traffic going out of here is not going to be, as far as getting on Meridian and stuff, is not going to be near as much as the issue is probably going in, you know, people trying to take a left on that lane coming out. But on the other hand, I don't know, in my mind, I have an issue with trying to make every development, um, fit into the traffic all hours of the day. I mean, we know that there's a couple hours a day that are just kind of bad everywhere. Um, but, you know, do you not develop something because of traffic for a few hours of the day? Um, I guess that's my comments. And I think, I think what they're going to do for, as far as safety, as far as the walking in the sidewalks and stuff, I think is, you know, it's going to be night and day difference. I think it'll, the safety is going to be improved, especially for pedestrians. Um,
Appreciate your comment. Go ahead, Commissioner Pearl.
Can I ask a dumb question of staff?
No questions, though. Go ahead.
So if this project goes through and we still have mixed use, um, on the future use map for that remaining parcel, the twenty-seven acres or wherever that is that the Hawkins owns, is there any way that we can make a recommendation that council would consider, um, modifying that future use map to, to show commercial for the remaining twenty-seven acres to give us some more assurance there? Or is that something that's not even possible?
Um, Chairman, Commissioner Holland, Commissioners, you know, at, at this point, I, I don't really think it's a feasible thing. We've just gotten through with our new, um, comp plan and adopted a new land use map. And, uh, I, I don't think council would independently make a, uh, application for a change to that map at this time. Um, a future applicant could request that, but again, we just got through with our comp plan process. So I, I'm not sure that council is going to be, um, anxious to make any changes to the map anytime soon without good justification. The, I will say though, the mixed use community designation allows for commercial uses. You don't, you don't need a commercial designation.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Sonia. I think my, my real question is just what we were kind of discussing earlier, that if this piece goes through all residential and Hawkins decides to sell someday because they don't want to develop it or whatever happens, and then we get another multifamily type project that comes in and they're stuck with the burden of having to fulfill the, the remainder of the mixed use portion because we allowed to have this, this acreage be, um, residential. Is there anything we can do to help make sure that we still have a significant amount of commercial that could come in the future?
Yeah, there, there's really not. Uh, when you're, when you're talking about a property that's not part of this development and application, the comp plan does not have a maximum on residential uses. So there could be more residential uses in that. It's not saying that they can't develop with, uh, residential. But if you're wanting all commercial, then, um, yeah, a commercial, a commercial land use designation wouldn't even, um, necessarily ensure that or guarantee that because multifamily developments are allowed in commercial.
Sure. Okay. Thanks, Sonia. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
I'll try to help the, the commission along as well. And Sonia was correct, but I, I just want to let, let the commission know that, you know, you had this same dilemma with the Stapleton subdivision, which was off of Meridian Road, Harris Street and Amity, where Hawkins owned a piece. They sold it off to Conger and his project was primarily residential. And you made a finding at that time that even though their project was all residential, you felt comfortable that there were still mixed use on the corner that could develop as commercial. So I see this particular property, property to the same setup. Uh, yes, the applicant has a mix of residential product types on it. There is an appropriate transition from the R four to the, the commercial that's to the east. Um, I've had conversations with Hawkins on that piece. Now I can't guarantee I have a crystal ball. It's going to all be commercial, but I know that was their intention when they met with me to discuss it. So certainly when we go to look at that piece, we're going to see how it blends in and transitions into this residential piece. And some of that property still has to be annexed in. So we do have a greater discretion, an annexation with that piece to tie them to a concept plan that has more commercial than for this body to see rather than having a residential piece. Now, does that mean they won't come in with, with residential? No. But all I'm saying is we, we have another bite at the apple. We can require more cur, commercial of that product to the east. And again, I, I commend the applicant for coming in and trying to correct a lot of those deficiencies, as you noted, with the connectivity in this area. Right now, we have so many homes off of Dead End Street, which is Linder and no connectivity out to Meridian Road until that overpass happens. So to me, having that ready connect through is one of the best possibilities for this section of Meridian because it does help EMS, it does help police, it does help fire to get people out from Linder Road to, to Meridian Road. So in my opinion, and, and staff's opinion, I should say, is that we made a finding that yes, it's all residential, but it is still consistent with that mixed use designation. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Bill. I appreciate the clarification. And one of the things I, I do want to showcase, talk about the fact that the applicant did sit on the, the comp plan, um, because the, the, one of the reasons he was, that went through denial the first time was there was a comp plan request change, uh, or comp plan change requested in the original application. And so during that process, the, the map was changed to mixed use. And I, I appreciate their efforts to sit on that and be a part of that discussion. Um, and again, I, ACHD is, is our, is the, the road experts. They do this for a living. Uh, we don't always have control of what they say, but they're telling us that's the connection they need to make functional traffic patterns. I, I'm not sure how to say that we know more than they do. I know we don't always like the judgments they make, but they, they're giving you a report that says this is what they think is the best for the community. Um, so I, I, I agree that traffic calming is absolutely would be necessary, but the work that the applicant is doing to improve the roads around there, um, to match up with the capital investment that's already been made at Waltman and Meridian, I think is, uh, pretty impressive. Um, and it's not required. So I, I think there's an effort to be increasing safety and I think they're willing to put the traffic calming measures in place. Um, so for what that's worth, just some additional thoughts.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, excuse me, if I may, um, if I could just add a little bit more to the land use discussion in this area. I'm not sure if you all caught it in my staff report or not, but staff's recommendation, um, well, let me back up. So the new comprehensive plan, um, states in the land use section that future land use designations are not parcel specific and that adjacent, uh, land use designations can apply, um, if proposed at a public hearing such as this. And, um, they can't, um, encompass more than fifty percent of a property. So my analysis included, um, that I, I recommend that that adjacent medium density, well, not even adjacent, it's on the western boundary of this property, the medium density, um, float to fifty percent of this property, which basically encompasses the rest of the single family portion of the development. And, and the reason for that is because we have medium density residential's existing to the west and existing, um, rural density and future medium density, uh, residential uses designated for the property on the north side of Waltman. Um, so this development provides a transition all the way around to, to the property, to the east, to the mixed use designated area. So staff's interpretation and recommendation was based on floating that medium density designation, um, to the rest of the single family portion of the development. And then the, the multifamily portion being part of that mixed use, uh, community area and providing the residential component of that area and then further transitioning to the east to the commercial and office. Um, this, this, a, a residential development is going to create much, much less traffic than a commercial development that's conceptually approved on this property with four hundred thousand square feet of, uh, commercial uses, uh, big box retail, that kind of thing. So anyway, I just wanted to add that additional information and kind of staff's, um, analysis on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia. I appreciate it. Are there any additional questions or comments for staff or just for the fellow commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal, go right ahead, sir.
I'll, I'll ask another silly question. Can, can we, is, is ACHD, is their response final on the access to Ruddy Drive? Meaning can we request that that not be opened?
Bill, do you, Sonia, you want to take that?
And, and the, the, the reason I ask is because if, if that could be done, I'm, I'm all over this. I mean, I, I, again, I, I echo, um, I echo Ryan's sentiments. I mean, what, what you're doing everywhere else is above and beyond. So to have that one thing getting in the way, but to me, it's just a, that's a huge is- issue. I, I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood. I'll just put it that way.
Um, Chairman, I can respond to that. Um, Commissioner Seal, Commissioners, uh, our city code, uh, requires stub streets to be extended, as does ACHD's, uh, policies. Um, the commission can make a recommendation for it not to be extended and city council cannot require it. Um, however, However, ACHD is the transportation authority, so I I'm not sure that the city can trump that.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, what we don't want you to do is is put the applicant between both agencies. We just got in that situation with the Delano subdivision. If you recall, where the neighbors didn't want Dashwood to get punched through, and the ACHD was fine with it on an interim basis, and you guys wanted recommended to be closed, and then ultimately council denied the application, and now it's going back for a reman. So again, the goal of this is to let the transportation agency define the parameters. As Sonia said, and the the comprehensive plan, the UDC requires stub streets to be extended. They're there for a reason, not to wall people off. In my mind, I I put myself, I tried to put myself in people's shoes. If I lived in that subdivision and I wanted to go to Winco, now I have to go all the way out to Linda Road to Franklin and come down Meridian Road and go to Winco. If this development goes in and punches that road through, now I get to get to Winco in half less time, and it's closer for me, it's more neighborhood-serving. So again, I'm not trying to sway you one way or another, but I'm just saying there this is a logical extension of this road. This, as Sonia said, there was a lot of commercial on the site. That road was contentious back then. It seems to be contentious now. But it's always going to be staff's position to guide you to to require stub streets to be extended for the comprehensive plan and the UDC standards.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Grubel.
You know, I think it, yeah, we're all looking at this. Yeah, everybody wanting to go out to Meridian Road into Winco. I think there's just as many people that live in this development that may want to go west, and that opening that up gives them the out to get over to Lender, which will eventually have an overpass and get over to Ten Mile where there's a lot of development as well and without going out to Meridian Road. I think that connectivity is important. Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland, go right ahead.
Uh, to build on a lot of the comments we've just had, too, I I think we're close, and I think there are some things we could do that might help other commissioners feel better about it. But I just wanted to run those thoughts by others, and I certainly don't have to make a motion. I'm happy to let somebody else do it. But a couple of thoughts that I've heard from people. One, if we could at least, I I I would agree, I don't think we can remove the connection to Ruddy Drive. I don't think that's our authority or our recommendation really should be around where road connections are. I think ACHD has reasons for why they want those connectivity there, and so does the city, and they make good points there. So I would say what we could do is request some sort of traffic calming measure where Ruddy Drive connects to the subdivision on the west. I don't know if we have a specific thought on what kind of traffic calming measure we want to see, or if we could just leave that up to the developer to work with staff on finding an appropriate traffic calming measure of some sort there. We could also look. We could ask them for consideration of a more concentrated open space in the R forty. If they could, I don't know, shift a couple lots and put in a basketball court or something like that. I don't know that I've got a specific way that I want to see that done, but that was something that was mentioned by a couple of us. We could ask council to consider if the density is too high in the R forty. I don't think I'm at the point where I want to restrict them or ask them to remove units, but we could certainly ask council to consider that as they look at the application. And then the request from the applicant was to modify A one C, which was to have the improvements done by phase three instead of phase two. I don't see a big concern with that, but I know the staff would require that the north side of Waltman would receive those improvements as part of phase two. So I think we can make that condition that the north side of Waltman would still need to be done in phase two, but the other improvements can be done at phase three. But I don't know what else you want to add to that, so I'm going to stop there and let you keep adding to the list if we need to.
I'm on a similar page that Commissioner Holland is. Our Holland, you are. I'm less concerned about the linear open space, but that's something we can talk about or concentrated open space. I I have no problem with making discussion points or recommendations to city council. And I do think, and I think Matt was very amenable to it, to specifically outline that we do want, whether it's chokers or it's rumble strips or it's whatever it's going to be in that curve, to make it so if you really want to go through that neighborhood, it's going to slow you down. And again, I think whoever's going to buy these houses is going to be well aware of what's taking place while they're hopefully, they they go in eyes wide open on what's that there is a connection point there. And I do have, Commissioner Seale, one question for you, just as you asked. Is there, what's your biggest concern on having the connection point? Besides, I understand a safety issue, but wouldn't you want, if you're in that neighborhood of the west, wouldn't you want this connection point? I guess that's my, I guess I'm confused there.
Yes, I'll I'll just answer it that way. It's just the sheer volume. So I mean, the 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 consideration for traffic around this is simply based on this development alone. And my biggest concern is you have probably a multi-phase, if not multiple developments to the west that are all going to funnel through this. I I I mean, I'm looking at the, you know, how the the houses are lined out, and if somebody really wants to go into this, you know, eyes wide open, stand out there at, you know, between seven and nine or seven and nine o'clock in the morning. I would imagine you're going to have a line that goes all the way up Ruddy, all the way down Waltman just from not even from this subdivision, not even from this development, from the all of the development from the west. I mean, that will calm itself over time when people figure out that, hey, that's just too crowded. It's not worth my time. I'm going to go around. The Lender overpass is going to help that out as well, but it's just the sheer volume of it. I mean, you're 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 having all of those all of those houses to the west that are essentially landlocked. I mean, there's no other way for them. They either have to go out to Lender Road and go around, or they go come through this one street. And and I agree. I mean, it's great connectivity for them to be able to get over to Winco. You know, there's a couple of ways they can split out. Once they get on Waltman, they can go out commercial, they can go go through Waltman. You know, however they're going to do that, it's just Ruddy as it comes around is just gonna, it's gonna carry an amazing, to me, as I see it, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but common sense tells me, because I've had to live through the, you know, development in in Meridian and in Kuna, for that matter, where the next thing you know, you have one little street and everybody trying to funnel through it, and that that meets this. I mean, it's on a curve. There's going to be trees. You're going to have kids that are in the subdivision that are in the, you know, essentially in that that northwest corner, they're going to have to cross over that road to get to the, you know, that great big open area. And and again, that's, I mean, yes, I I I think for the individual that's trying to get to different places, this makes a lot of sense. But in all, the overwhelming amount, just the traffic volume trying to pass on that one little street, it, I mean, that's that's just a no-go for me. And and yeah, it's probably going to be really, really busy for a couple hours in the morning and really, really busy for a couple hours at night. And then it'll be like every other street, you know, fairly underutilized. But those hours where you have kids trying to get to school buses and, you know, walking home and going to activities and things like that, I I I just think that the the overwhelming amount of traffic that's going to pass on that road is simply too much. And again, it's it's disappointing because I I'm not overlooking everything that the applicant is trying to do to to help this to fit. I mean, there's some minor concerns with the rest of it in my mind. You know, but what they're doing to, you know, the work they're doing on Corporate Drive, the work they're doing on Waltman to improve the safety, to improve all of that, the bridges, the pathways and everything, they're they're above and beyond. But this funneling everything through there and not, you know, I mean, I I just, I can't imagine somebody looking at that thinking that people are going to continue to go out Lender Road and around. I I mean, I I just think there's going to be an overwhelming amount of traffic that passes through that one little street.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
I had a question for staff and then just kind of an overall trying to piece some things together. Staff, I was wondering on above this parcel that we're talking about, this project, if there is, if you know, if like ACHD is considering connecting the stub street to the west, to the northwest Greenhead Street to a commercial or corporate, sorry.
Chairman, Commissioner Grove, I'm sorry, I'm I don't have a map in front of me, and I'm not sure exactly which street you're referencing.
That's that's okay, Sonia. I have the map pulled up. So I'll try to, so, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Grove, looking at letter J S layer. Yeah, there is a stub street off of Greenhead Street, and it steps to an Ada County parcel. That's roughly seven and a half acres. So more than likely, when that property develops, yes, we'll probably have that street tie in and connecting to either Waltman or the collector or both. We just don't know. We don't know at this point until they come in with annexation. But I can tell you the future land use map has that as medium-density residential, so we can anticipate some kind of public street system through that property.
Thank you. The reason I ask is because it, looking at this area comprehensively, it seems to me that the more connectivity we have, the more options we have for people to disperse, and that is going to lessen traffic in areas. So if we have more options for people, it, to me, it seems to reason that that burden gets dispersed, it might not get dispersed evenly, but it has a greater ability to disperse if there's options. So that that'd be my only pushback. And then I guess in general, just trying to understand, like, if not this, what is the solution to this property? Because no matter what comes in here, it's going to have traffic of some kind. So if not this, how, you know, what are we going to be asking for this development? If it were to come through completely different to mitigate the traffic concern rather than, I mean, or is this, would this be destined to not be developed, I guess would be the question. So I'm just kind of, I don't have like thoughts or anything. I'm just trying to wrap my head around what that means.
I think you're, I think it's a great question because I think whatever goes in there is going to have to connect to Waltman. I mean, I, that is a stub street, and that's, so whatever develops here, whether it's commercial or R four or or radar forty, but it's got to be mixed use because of the comp plan, is going to have a connection point to Waltman. I don't think we're getting away from that with whatever gets developed because that's ACHD's desire, I think it's the city's desire. And I think I really appreciate that you pointed out the Greenhead connections. I think there are additional connection points that are going to get brought into this eventually as other things develop in that area.
Mr. Chair.
Time, but I think they are going to connect.
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, ma'am.
So remind me, on phase one and two, that's going to be the R eight, R fifteen, and then the R forties are going to be in phase three and four? Was that, was that correct?
Chris, can you bring up the map on the phasing plan again? Because R one is the connection point to Waltman. And then in the that, that's phase one. I can't remember the checkerboard, which way it goes around the circle. There's four phases. Chris, can you bring that up real quick?
I'm in the process of doing that.
Thanks, sir.
So I guess my question is, is corporate is going to go through with phase one, and then they're going to have to redo the bridge on Waltman. So I'm taking there's going to be either limited access on Waltman at that time. So traffic is going to have to funnel down corporate. Okay, so we're doing so we're doing that, and then the second phase is going to be one of the apartment complexes. So.
Sonia, can you walk us through the the request on when things are happening? Sorry, I want to make sure we're all clear.
Thank you.
Chairman, are you asking about the applicant request?
Yeah, well, just in general, when, you know, when we're doing widening Waltman, when bridges are being done, when the sidewalks, all that fun stuff.
So the extension of corporate, the off-site extension of corporate from the north and the sidewalk along the east side is going to be done prior to issuance of building permits in the first phase of development. And the widening of Waltman and the reconstruction of the bridge and the construction of the sidewalk along the north side of Waltman, and these are all off-site improvements, will be done prior to the third phase of development.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Castanelli.
Sonia, I've got this, bringing this phasing map presents a couple of questions. We're going, we're going to do phase three and four. So all the construction equipment is going to go through existing phases through existing residential. Seems to me it should be flipped. What was your, what was the consideration on that, if any?
I I'm not sure what you're, so the extension of corporate is going to take place prior to issuance of any building permits. So access will be available from the north from corporate and from the east from Meridian Road via Waltman.
Correct, but the, so phase one is the is the R eight and R fifteen in the northwest corner. Phase two is the, what I'm looking at here, phase two is the multifamily on the northeast. You build those two in. Now, when you do phase four, you got to run all your construction vehicles and equipment through existing apartment buildings. Likewise, phase three, you got to run everything through through the existing residential.
I I see your point. You know, I I'm not sure the applicant could answer that question, but the the public hearings closed, so.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Was that ever, was that ever looked at? Is that, I mean, to me, that just, it seems backwards. I would put the, I would build in the back first.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I didn't I didn't discuss that specifically with the applicant.
Okay.
Do you want to ask the applicant?
Well, I don't know if we want to open it up for that. Mr. Commissioner, if I, and I guess there's there's pros and cons, too. Then you're bringing, you know, then you're having, if if you do, if phase three becomes phase one, then you're driving residential people out through all the constructions. So it's
Yep.
It's a, you know, it's not good either way, I guess. Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I might. One more thing, my my issue with and looking at the map and I and I see what Commissioner Grove was pointing out on that Greenhead, but that could be, I mean, that could be twenty years before that road ever gets developed. May never, I mean, you know, if somebody wants to keep that parcel forever. And and I agree with Commissioner Seal, we're bringing now three access points off Lender are going to essentially, I mean, some people will probably still go out Lender because they, if they're having a, you know, they're, they may go down to Ten Mile, they may have a a different, a different routed, you know, they'd be going to drop their kids off to school and then out or something. But you're still reduced, you're still going to take what went out, three access points and funneling it all through the one Ruddy. And and that's, that that's one of, that's, to me, again, I mean, that's a huge issue. If if we knew that the one up top on that Greenhead was was going to be opening up simultaneously, I'd be more comfortable with with that access points, but that may never, that may never happen. And then the other man, I'm still, I I still feel that Waltman is going to be taxed to the absolute limit as soon as this goes through.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I think I think Commissioner Castanelli brings up some good points, at least with the phasing plan about construction traffic. But certainly, the applicant is entering into a DA, new DA. There's a rezone here, so it's certainly within your purview to suggest a new phasing plan. It's certainly within your purview in the development agreement as a recommended provision to say that phase one That phase one and three could happen prior to the multifamily happening. Uh, you want to see other improvements done. So if traffic is a concern, you can certainly have the, the single family develop. Ahead of the larger multifamily and say. Potentially two and four, you can hold off and say until. Maybe Hawkins comes in and see how this, that, that develops in the future. That may be an option for you to hold off on some of that. Uh, again, I don't want you to deliberate on that without speaking with the applicant. So if that's something you want to contemplate, talking about rephasing this and. Holding on a certain amount of units coming on per phase, per year. Whatever date you want to set and parameters you want to set in that DA, then I would certainly encourage you to speak with the applicant on those types of things.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioner Holland.
I think rather than opening it back up to discuss the phasing plan, that's something that certainly should be noted and it's a great comment and a great point. I'm sure they have reason for why they designed the phasing the way that they did, but I'd feel comfortable if we just asked the applicant to reconsider the phasing plan and be ready to have a discussion with council on. Um, on why and how they do the phasing. And if council wants to reconsider that. If you don't want to discuss it more, we certainly can.
No, I'm comfortable with that as well, but I, I'm open to other discussions. If we, if there's a need to. Talk to the applicant, we can do that. It's up to you all. But I'm comfortable saying that there's some concerns there, depending on how we move forward.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCarthy.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to reopen. I just, I mean. It doesn't matter who moves in first. The first one is always going to live amongst the construction and the construction vehicles and the. Construction atmosphere for. Sometimes a couple of years. It's just part of moving into a new development.
I've been living in my neighborhood for seven years and it's still going on all around me, so I understand you. So there are additional thoughts or comments? I mean, I think we have a couple of pieces that we, I think Commissioner Holland did a good job of laying things out. I think there's some. Definite thoughts on the ruddy connection, um. And the Waltman, but where, are we in a place where we can? Liberate further or motions or where, what is the will of the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pitts.
Yeah, with, with the way this phasing is set up, uh, obviously they're going to have to. Cut off Waltman for a while while everybody goes down corporate, past those big three-story apartments. Down that way. Um, I, I just think the traffic is going to. Back up to a point, especially when the bridge is being done. That maybe once the bridge is finished and that road is widened. Traffic might, I mean, it's going to be heavy, but like you said, it's going to be for a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours at night. I'm more concerned about them getting into the subdivision than. Than getting out. I, I'm. I think that. That corporate drive, once it's finished and goes through, is going to be utilized as well.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, can try to make the motion that I ran through some thoughts with earlier and see what happens.
I, motions are in order, my, always, so go right ahead.
All right, after considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of the city council file number H dash twenty twenty dash zero zero two four. As presented in the staff report for the hearing date of May twenty first, twenty twenty, with the following modifications. Um, that, uh, A one C would be modified to allow some of the improvements done by phase three instead of. Or before phase three instead of phase two. Um, but that they would still work with staff's recommendation to require that the north side of Waltman would receive the improvements, um, prior to phase two. And that the applicant would work with staff on that specific condition to make sure that it meets both their needs. That there would be a traffic calming measure implemented for where Ruddy Drive connects to the subdivision on the west. That there would be consideration by the applicant and, um, preparation for discussion with council. On the open space for the multifamily on the east, if there's a way to configure some additional open spaces there. That, uh, we would ask council to consider if the density is too high in the R forty, if they feel comfortable with the number of units. And that we would ask the applicant to reconsider and be prepared to discuss with council the phasing plan. Related to construction traffic going through the neighborhoods as well as timing of roadway improvements and. Um, discuss whether or not that phasing should be reconfigured.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval of file number H twenty twenty dash zero zero two four. Are there any other discussion before we call for a roll call vote? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Seal.
Nay.
Commissioner McCarthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Pitts.
Nay.
Commissioner Grove.
Aye.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Nay.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Keep coming to these, General. Aye. Um, motion passes on fourth three vote. Um. Guys, I really appreciate the discussions. I think these are hard. Um, and it's, I think it's going to get harder with, as we continue to grow, especially with infill. Uh, Matt, thanks for all your work and, and for all this stuff that you've been doing. Um, I, I think we're, we're seeing the, the way our city is growing, um, just in the general, how we've been voting lately. And I appreciate everybody's really intense look at these projects and the discussion that we've all had, because I think it's. It's indicative of what we're going to be dealing with for a while. Um, ACHD, that's definitely needs to catch up. The legislature needs to understand that we're, we need some more infrastructure and that's, I think, what we're voting on right now. Um, and now views of that. And so. Really appreciate all the work of the city staff. I really appreciate the neighbors being involved in all this process. Um, and I think there's, we're going to continue to have these. Um, really intense conversations about how we see the city growing. So. Thank you for all your work. Thank you for the conversations and, and, uh, we'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCarthy.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Be opposed. Thanks, team. Really appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Let's hope summer comes soon.
Good night.